I can't take it, then. Good evening and welcome to the City of Lowell zoning Board of Appeals. Public hearing for December 13, 2021. Due to the ongoing pandemic, our meeting is live in person on LTC. You can also join on your computer tablet or smartphone. You can call in or you can Zoom. All articles, petitions are posted online for your review. Tonight, our alternate voting member will be George Parko. We will start out with continued business. A matter of open record, if you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate or turn it off. If you need to speak amongst yourselves or between yourselves, please do so outside in the corridor. As in accordance with city policy, masks must be worn complete within the chambers. They cannot be on your chin. We will follow the guidelines set by the city administration. If you wish to speak on behalf of a petition, please approach the lectern, state your name and address for public record, and you will be heard accordingly. Moving on to continued business. ZB 2021-34, variance Julio Cortez at 242 Lakeview Avenue, Section 5.1, Section 5.3. Mr. Julio Cortez has applied to demolish a vacant single-family home in a bakery at 242 Lakeview Avenue and replace them with a two-family home. The property is located in traditional multifamily TMF zoning district and requires multiple variances under Section 5.1 for front, side, deck, back, minimum lot area and minimum lot area per dwelling unit, and any other Section 5.3 for landscape, open space, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. This is the petitioner here this evening who will speak on behalf. Is there a notice of record for a continuation request?
Well, Fray would wait for Frayn. I think she would have that information.
Thank you. Apologize.
Sorry, I was describing the microphone.
I apologize, I thought you were set up.
What was your question?
As it relates to 2021-34, Mr. Cortez has requested a continuance. There's no one here regarding that.
No one is here. To my knowledge, no one's requested a continuance. I'm not sure why no one is here to speak on that petition. We could return to it later in the meeting.
Okay.
If you wish.
Very well, thank you. Sir?
My name is Robert Hunt. I live at 48 Florence Avenue. This is the fourth time we've been here for this.
Sir, if you're here, if you are Mr. Cortez.
No, I am not.
Well, thank you, then. We'll table that. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Moving forward, we will table this and leave it open in hopes for a, an arrival and/or a communication to the city. Moving forward on to new business. ZB 2021-55 variance Arribito Garcia at 84 Cambridge Street, Section 4.5. Arriberto Garcia has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals to construct a second-story addition at 84 Cambridge Street with the side yard setback. The property is located in a traditional two-family TTF zoning district and requires variance approval under Section 4.5 to extend a non-conforming side yard setback and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir. How are you tonight?
How are you doing?
Good, thanks. If you could state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about your petition.
How are you doing? My name is Arriberto Garcia. I'm from North Andover. I own 84 Cambridge Street, Lowell, Mass. I want to add a second-floor addition.
Sir, if I could trouble you just to maybe lift that mic a little bit? I don't know if it's an IT issue.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's a little better. Yeah, we can speak right into it.
So, once again, my name is Arriberto Garcia. I'm adding a second-floor addition to 84 Cambridge Street in Lowell. The reason I'm doing it is to expand the living space of the property and so I can have my family move in. Over the several months of working on the property, I had people break into the property and vandalize it, and it's been kind of a delay, basically, at this point. The properties around have a second-floor level. I'm not adding any, like, any square footage out of the foundation. I think it would help the community and make it look better and make, basically, the community a much safer place for kids, you know? And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Any others wishing to speak at this time? None being heard. Like to open up to the board. Ben?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think the relief the applicant is seeking is very minimal, in my opinion. I think this only adds to the value, not just to his home, but to the neighborhood. You know, I think the setback that he's looking for relief, it's just barely over two feet, the setback. I think overall, I think this is something I can support, and I wish the very best of luck, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. This, I think the relief, I mean, this possibly could be granted with the relief being stopped, but I do have a couple of questions. Sir, so I was looking at the plans, the floor plans. So, is this, so it's presently listed as a two-family, and it looks like the floor plans show it as still an existing two-family. Is that the intention, is that your intention to maintain it as a two-family?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Do you have any, I mean, are there any tenants, do you have any tenants living there right now, or is like?
Yes, that's, that's the reason I want to finish it. I live in North Andover.
Okay.
Trying to finish it so I can move in with my kids.
Okay.
Soon as possible.
So, I mean, I guess it kind of makes sense to extend that back, that back end with the new addition to put it on top of and add in a couple more bedrooms. I'm looking at, I noticed that on the back end of the, the back porch does provide the stairs, a stairway that goes up in the back end of the building. So, do you, the first-floor deck floor plan, it looks like, I mean, are those stairs only going to go access to the, to the lower, to the first-floor apartment?
The second floor. So, the side stairways go to the second floor, and then the first floor has a separate entrance.
Okay, the first floor has an entry in the front, right?
Yes.
Then there's stairs on the side.
Also.
That have access to, that's supposedly access to the second-floor apartment. But on the back end, the back porch where you're going to be building on top of, I noticed that there's some stair, there's some stairs that come out towards the yard area on the left-hand side. So, is that just going to remain as access to the, to the front, to the front floor, or are you going to extend that out to the top of the second floor?
The side, so basically, everything would be, stay the same, and the only thing, the only difference is going to change is basically just adding the addition to the back part of the property.
Okay, so there's no plans for the, for the back stairs on the back part of the deck, or I guess you want to call it a deck or the back end, that now currently access the first floor, there's no plans to have that extend up to go to the second floor, correct?
No.
No, okay. I mean, if you, if you were, if there were plans like that, I would, I would just like to, like to be able to see those because it's, I just, I just want to see if there's a second way of egress out of the second floor there.
There is a second egress through the front door and then through the top. The side stairway is to the second floor.
That's the, yeah, that's the only, so the only egress going to the second floor will be the side stairway, side stair deck that on the?
And the front entrance also.
Oh, they have, okay, so there's access on the front, on the front entrance too?
Yeah, front and side, yes.
Okay, just try to find those on the plans there. I'm just. Sorry, the plans were a little confusing because you have existing first-floor plan that's blank and then existing first-floor plan that's breaking down.
If I may?
Yep.
The building inspector will make sure that there are the proper numbers, or that there's two means of egress for each unit, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure that that's in the jurisdiction of the board.
Okay.
I don't think you need to opine on that.
So, that's fine. I mean, I was just kind of curious about that, so. All right. All right, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions, but I think that the fact that you're basically using the footprint that we have currently that's non-conforming and, and just rising over that with the addition makes a lot of sense. And you're not really looking for a lot of relief, even though it is, I think it's almost 10 feet of relief. I think it's a 10, some 25, and you only have about two and a half feet on one side and 11 feet on the other, so you're quite a bit less than 25 feet overall, for sure. But that's largely because of the existing non-conforming structure is already that way. So, the fact that you're not changing the footprint significantly and you're improving the second, the second apartment that was small, to say the least.
Yeah, pretty much. Very small.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that this makes a lot of sense, and I think I can support it. It's a, it's a nice street back there. I, you know, I hadn't been back there before, and it's a nice little neighborhood. It's a very nice, nicely maintained, too, so I really look forward to this project, discontinuing that whole neighborhood back there and improving it, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's quite apparent that the property's fallen into disrepair, and it is in desperate need of your investment, so I thank you for coming forward with that. Being that the, what you intend to do is totally consistent with the neighborhood and will, in fact, enhance the character of the neighborhood, I'll support this petition. Best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I agree with my fellow board members. I, I think that, you know, this would obviously enhance, you know, the neighborhood, and the fact that you are a family person moving into the neighborhood, I, I think would just add to the value and the character of the neighborhood. So, I, I can definitely support this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, George. Well, sir, you've heard the support of the board, and I agree with, with my colleagues, the investment into the property, bringing your family to live in, to live in our city. Exactly the type of homeowners and fellow citizens we, we love to have in our city, and anytime we can take residents back from the surrounding suburbs is always a plus as well, so. I, I agree, I can support this. We have no conditions and no other comments or concerns of the board. None being heard. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-51 for 84 Cambridge Street for variance approval under Section 4.5 to extend non-conforming side yard setback to construct a second-story addition on an existing residential building within the side yard setback.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second, and Vice Chair Peck may have a roll call, please.
Chairman Pyron?
Approve.
Member Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approved.
Member Brier? Member Proco?
Approved.
So, you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck and good luck with your project. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your time. Moving forward on to new business, ZB 2021-55, variance, variances in Boston Capital, 733-735 Broadway Street, Section 8.1, Section 5.1, Section 5.2, Section 5.3, Section 6.1. Boston Capital has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals to redevelop, redevelop the historic mill building at 733-735 Broadway Street into 53 affordable housing units. The project includes the redeveloped and existing structure, the construction of addition to include additional housing and management office and parking. The subject is located in a traditional multifamily TMF zoning district and requires site plan approval per Section 11.4, special permit approval per Section 8, 8.1, for the conversion of a historic structure, and special permit approval per Section 4.5 for the conversion from one non-conforming use to another conforming use from the Lowell Planning Board. The project also requires variance approval per Section 6.1 for relief from the off-re parking and landscaping requirements, variance approval per, per Section 8.1 for relief from historic conversion requirements, variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from dimensional requirements, variance approval per Section 5.2 for relief from special dimensional requirements, and variance approval per Section 5.3 for relief from the landscape, open space requirement for the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Mr. Chairman?
Pleasure.
Point of personal privilege.
Mr. Brier?
Whereas the Lowell Housing Authority is a director butler to the property in question, I must respectfully recuse myself in participation on this petition as I am an employee of the Lowell Housing Authority. And while I am unaware of the Housing Authority's opinion with respect to this proposal, I am, I am aware that somewhere throughout the process, their involvement may be necessary or may be asked upon. So, I would like the petitioner to know prior that I will not be participating, and as I said, submit my recusal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. We appreciate that notice.
I guess point of order, real quick, with Mr. Chairman with regards to the meeting, it's Frayn. Do we have people on Zoom? I just want to make sure.
We do.
Okay, I just, I don't know, we have a lot on the agenda, and we didn't check on that before, so I just want to double-check. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I would appreciate your assistance with Zoom refereeing as you out throughout our open hearing.
Try my best to call balls and strikes.
Been greatly appreciated. Sir, good evening. You tell us a little bit about your project, and we'll be happy to hear.
Will do. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow board members. My name is Rich Mazaki. I'm with Boston Capital Development. We're located 11 Beacon Street in Boston, Mass. Again, my name is Rich Mazaki. I'm a managing director at the company, and I'd like to introduce the rest of our team here tonight. Bill Martin with Eno Martin, Cliff Bomer with Davis Square Architects, and Brian Gaudreau with Hancock and Associates. We're excited to be here tonight to present the 733 Broadway development. We strongly believe that our proposed project is a significant benefit to the acre neighborhood and the city of Lowell at large. We're creating 53 units of high-quality affordable housing in an attractively designed building. This is an appropriate location of a, for residential development of this scale, which we'll cover throughout the presentation. 53 families will have new homes, adding vibrancy to the area by revitalizing an underutilized property in the, in the acre neighborhood. This will offer major improvements to the streetscape along Broadway and also to the adjacent Francis Gate National Park attraction. I'd like to point out that based upon our planning board meeting last Monday, as well as discussions with historic staff, we have modified the design since the original submission to the zoning board. Unless there are any objections, we'd like to present our revised design here tonight. Of course, with the understanding that we're not asking for a vote, I think that what we'd like to have is some feedback and discussion among the board.
Thank you.
And, and the modifications, as you'll see, are not, they are material to the facade and the appearance of the building, but the scale and the scope of the building has not changed significantly. I'd also add that with those changes, we're not changing any of the relief being requested of the zoning board. I'd like to provide a quick overview of Boston Capital and the, and the project as well, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to other team members. We're a multifamily real estate firm, been in business since 1974. We specialize in affordable housing. We've, we've been recognized for many years as a leader in the industry, and we have a national footprint, but our roots are local, and we're very active locally in the development of affordable housing. We put together development teams for each project with highly qualified architects, engineers, managers, and contractors. I, I did want to point out just one representative project here. This is Indigo Block located in Dorchester, Mass. A project we recently completed, six-story urban infill project on 2.7 acres in Dorchester. We have 44 affordable units and 36 workforce units. You can flip to the next slide, please. This is just representative of what the interiors of apartments that we develop look like, granite countertops, vinyl plank flooring, oversized windows, ceramic tile, and bathrooms and other areas within the unit. And I think that this is consistent with how we would design the 733 Broadway project. So, just a bit about the 733 Broadway project. The site is 6.6 acres. It's currently home to the Merrimack Valley Food Bank in an 18,000-square-foot building. What we're proposing is 53 affordable units, including 22 one-bedrooms, 27 two-bedrooms, and four three-bedroom units. The current operation on the site with the food bank, it's obviously a great cause for Lowell and Merrimack Valley in general, but it's, it's really not a good location for what they do there. There are trucks in and out frequently. It's in a residential neighborhood, and from a streetscape perspective is, is not, not ideal. I think the residential use that we're proposing is well-suited. The adjacent building owned by Lowell Housing Authority is approximately 90 units, three and four stories, and our building is designed at the same height as the building adjacent to ours, the Lowell Housing Authority building. Our proposed development will increase the city of Lowell's tax base. We're estimating over $50,000 annually in, in taxes to the city of Lowell. The property currently pays zero taxes with a nonprofit operating there. The other thing I'd like to point out is the development plan is very consistent with the city of Lowell's master plan. Just a few points to touch on there. 100% of our units will be affordable housing. The way we're setting up the program, all of the units will be affordable to households earning 60% or less of area median income. For this project, that would be $68,000 annually for a family of four. So, we're serving folks that are working, households that are working in the education sector, municipal, administrative support, and, and other sectors as well, retail trades. The other thing I would mention is we're committing to keep the property affordable for a minimum of 45 years. There was also a concern at one point brought up about students living at the property. There will be no students allowed from, college students, full-time students are really prevented from living in affordable housing developments. Second point relative to Lowell's master plan, the project will provide housing that links work, transportation, and recreational opportunities. Given the location in close proximity to bus stops, access to employment centers, the canal walk nearby, which I know is, is being developed, will have, I think, very strong access to, to all of those features. Third, sustainable design, that's an important aspect of our program. Cliff will touch on that during his presentation. One comment that I would like to address in the staff memo regarding one, one part of the relief is relief from the parking requirements. We're proposing one space per unit. The requirement is two spaces per unit. This one space per unit is consistent with demand that we've seen in our portfolio as well as our property manager in discussions with them on an urban location like this. We have great access to public transportation with bus stops adjacent to the site. We're also providing bike storage for 54 bikes. We are considering setting aside two or three spaces for car share, such as Zipcar, as well, and we can, we can follow up on that. The one space per unit I just pointed out, it is reserved for each unit, so each unit will be entitled to one parking space. As a result of discussions with the planning board last week, we are engaging a traffic and transportation demand management plan, so we'll be able to follow up with that as well in the coming weeks. We, again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and we're excited to be presenting this project. We think it's a great thing for the city of Lowell and look forward to the discussion. I'll turn it over to Bill Martin at this point.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Good evening, Counselor. How are you?
Fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and members of the board. I know there's a packed room here, so I'm going to try to be very brief. I just wanted to outline a little bit about the nature of the relief we're seeking. The staff memo outlined two sort of different, parallel tracks for approval, and at the planning board, we opted to pursue track two. So, this is basically the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use into another pre-existing non-conforming use. Typically, that would be a special permit from this board, but because we need site plan approval, the planning board will be the, the board that grants, considers and grants that application. However, because we are increasing some of the nature of the non-conformities, there are some variances required, as Mr. Mazaki pointed out, parking, and then a few, some dimensional requirements relating to bulk density and setback. We improve setbacks in some areas, but don't in every area. So, in our application, it was 5.2, 5.3, 5.1, 6.1. We're not seeking approval for a conversion of a historic building. We are maintaining some of the facades in the historic nature, and we're working with the historic board on that, but we're not seeking relief under that, that section. In the staff memo, there are a number of things that are comments for proposed conditions. We essentially agree with all of those. Happy to talk about any of them in detail or answer questions about the relief that we're seeking in detail, but rather than belabor the legal points here, I think you benefit, and the public would benefit from seeing more detail about the project. So, I'm going to introduce the architect for the project.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much for hearing us tonight. My name's Cliff Bomer. I'm a principal at Davis Square Architects. We've done a good bit of work here in Lowell. Love the city and appreciate the opportunity to, to do some work in another neighborhood, another section of a neighborhood that, that I think could benefit from the help. I, I have a lot of slides, and I'm going to go through them pretty fast, and I, I apologize for having a lot of slides, but I think the main point I'm trying to make is that the design of the building is based on looking at a lot of context. As Rich pointed out, it's a, right now, it is a kind of industrial, commercial use, and it's a missing kind of link in that part of the neighborhood. So, studying the, the nearby buildings, both along Broadway, on Shafer Street, and on Ting Street, has really helped inform us in the design of the building. I do want to reiterate something, another point that Rich also made, that we have been consulting with Steve, Steve Stollet Historic, as well as National Park Service Architect and the Chair of the Historic Commission. We've met with them once, got some terrific feedback. I spoke to Steve again today, and we're going to be meeting with them again to look at some of these ideas that we've introduced into the plans and, and mainly the building massing and articulation based on our, our discussions with them. So, I'll run through these. Pardon me if it's, if I'm going too fast. This isn't a, obviously, an aerial view, the, the box around, the, the white broken line. The box around, the white broken-lined box, is the Lowell Housing Authority existing development, 90 senior units. We're to the south of that, which is planned down towards the bottom of the sheet. At the bottom of the, the large road at the bottom is Broadway. To the left of our site, which is the L-shaped site that fronts on Broadway, the left-hand street is Schaefer Street, and the right-hand street that fronts the canal is Ting Street. I will say that I think the, probably the best benefit from working with Historic is we spoke with them about preserving as much of the historic fabric in the existing building, which actually was an extension of the shoe factory, which is what the Housing Authority building did an adaptive reuse on. We are saving fabric based on discussions with them, and I'll show you a little bit of that as we move on. The next view is kind of a bird's-eye view. I think probably the most important thing to understand about this area is there are sort of four and a half buildings in the foreground there that are all multifamily, large buildings that already exist on Broadway. Obviously, they were built at the same time, same designer. They're kind of a central entry design, strong expression of entry in the center. Those buildings are each about 38 feet tall with very little setback to the street. In the, to the right of the fourth or the fifth one of those is our street frontage, and then to the right of that is the canal, and the red brick buildings in the back is that existing 90-unit Lowell Housing Authority Senior Housing Development. I think that image, can we just look at that one more second? Sorry. I think that image pretty clearly shows the idea of a kind of missing end to that residential area. It's a dense-packed residential area with a big missing piece at the end that kind of bookends the neighborhood. Moving along, the next view is a look up Broadway. You can see the fronts of some of those four-family, those are four-family symmetrical buildings. Those are the ones that are 38 feet tall that come right down to the sidewalk. Next view, we're moving closer towards, we're moving eastward now towards the canal, getting close to our site, which is on the left. Next shot is looking into the site, and now you can see the operation of the food bank. There's a very large parking area and truck delivery area, a loading dock that was added onto the historic building that we'd be removing to enhance the sense of the history of the important historic element. Next shot is, I believe, yep, looking back, so this is looking west now on Broadway. You see the, the white car is actually parked along the side of Ting Street. Our site is behind that wooden fence, and Ting Street is, I think, the next shot. You look up, yeah, so that's looking up Ting Street. To the right is the canal. To the left, you can see our loading dock in the background. To the right, that White House is owned by the Housing Authority as well, and that's a building that is slated for veterans' housing. Next shot. Now you can see the, some of the historic fabric along Ting Street. Ting Street is actually kind of a pleasant walking area. That part of the Housing Authority development on the left is three stories tall. Our building is just starting on the left. Those first three bays of the historic building are actually our building, even though they're attached directly to the Housing Authority development. Next shot, I believe, is looking, yeah, that's looking directly at our end of the building. So that stone lintel is the beginning of our building, and those first four bays are actually our building. Where the green windows start is the Housing Authority development. We're preserving that entire facade on that side, demolishing that piece of brick to the far left, which is part of the loading dock of the existing facility. Next shot, boy, this is exhausting just talking this fast. This is looking south on Ting Street. We're almost at the end of the Housing Authority development now. That's one of their entries at the far northern, the northeastern corner of their building. I think Rich noted that the canal to the left, the walkway along the canal, is slated for some upgrades, so that's going to be even a nicer piece of property than it is now. Continuing on, yes, now we're looking up Schaefer Street. So we're standing near Broadway, looking north on Schaefer. You can see some of the, that's a two-family in the foreground, a two-family, the next one down with the gable end, and then you see a big brick thing. If we get closer to that, that is, in fact, a freezer, a big freezer that the food bank uses now. That would be demolished in our plan, and we would preserve the historic building that's just beyond that. I forget, it's four or five bays of the historic building. Our goal in this case, and you'll see later with some other images, is to create some breathing room between our building and that existing two-family home that's immediately to the right in this view. Next shot. Okay, so this is getting closer to our building. The freezer building is to the right, and we're continuing our walk up to the north along Schaefer Street, and you're seeing those five historic bays that we'll preserve in that building. Next shot, I think, is, yeah, now we're looking back. To the left is a taller part of the senior housing building with the green windows. That's part of the senior housing development, which is four stories, sort of four-plus stories, and you can see the end of our building. Our intention is to keep the facade, renovate the facade along Schaefer Street, but also keep the first three bays of that historic fabric as it marches down towards the east, parallel to the end elevation of the Housing Authority development. Next shot. Yeah, there you get a sense of the height of the Housing Authority development. Rich mentioned that we're matching the height of that building, and you see a little piece of ours in the foreground. There is a little 10-foot-wide passageway between the two buildings that goes back to a courtyard that's defined by the end of our building and the U-shaped historic shoe factory. Yeah, so here we are with the proposed view from, so this is our frontage now on Broadway, our proposed street elevation on Broadway, kind of in the same spirit as the four-families further down the street. We've made a symmetrical facade on the street, a center entry piece. That would be the primary entry. It's very close to the bus stop. You're looking up Ting Street to the right with a view of the, of our historic fabric that then continues plugged right into the Housing Authority building. The idea on this side, which was, I think, really important to the Historic Commission and to us as well, once they pointed out to us, they actually thought that maybe that should be the front entry to the buildings, because it really does, it's a nice linear element that bookends the neighborhood and faces the linear park along the canal. The next shot is, this is a little bit of an aspirational view, because something we think would really be terrific would be to improve Ting Street. So this is an idea about extending some planting peninsulas out into Ting Street, broaden the pedestrian sidewalk, and really make it a wonderful walk for all the residents in the Housing Authority, and to really help mitigate the scale and soften up the elevation on the east side of our building. I would note that that is not our property. That's why I'm saying it's aspirational, but we can talk about that more. This is now on Schaefer Street. So I think the things that we're trying to do here, you can see those five bays of the historic building that we're preserving, then we're setting back the main volume of our building, we're setting further back from the street than that existing freezer block. And most importantly, I think, for our two-family neighbor to the south, we've moved our building more than 20 feet further away from their building than the current one that gives us a lot of landscaping area and just some relief from what they've been experiencing for a long time. Next shot is looking from the other direction. There you get a little bit of view on the left back into the courtyard of the senior housing development, and you see we're also talking about, as I mentioned before, preserving those three bays that go east-west on the north side of our building, of the historic brickwork, and again, featuring a landscaped area between our building and the two-family to the south. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Could you back up one more? Yeah, and I think you can see there, we're showing contrasting views of before and after. Was there one before that? I think I just skipped right over it. I was talking too fast. Yeah, there we go. I think really the point of this view is to accentuate the importance of removing that big freezer building to create that space for our neighbor on the south side. The next slide, just in case it wasn't clear as a site plan, please go to the next, yeah, there you go. So this, to the top of the slide is Ting Street that goes left to right. That's where we're proposing our vehicular entry and bike entry on the upper left-hand corner. The dark rendered corner is the preserved historic fabric. That's our vehicle entry, bike entry, and Broadway is to the right, going up and down the sheet. That's our main pedestrian and resident entry. We wanted to do it this way, I think, for kind of obvious reasons. We didn't really want to bring traffic on to Schaefer Street. Schaefer Street is one way that goes towards Broadway, and it made the most sense to us to enter the building from Ting Street. And I think, we have more slides, but what they are is the, what you've seen is our slightly revised version. It actually, Rich pointed out, it's very similar dimensionally. It is very similar, although with more articulation in the building, we do have one fewer unit. So the revised version is 52 apartments, not 53 apartments. The bedroom count changes a bit as well, and in our current proposal, we're hoping to provide 21 one-bedroom, 26 two-bedroom, and five three-bedrooms, for a total of 52 apartments. Okay. That was fast. I'm sorry.
Thank you, no, appreciate that. It's always nice to walk, step through a project of this size.
Yeah.
To provide not only those in attendance, but those at home, especially with how we're operating now, with the visual of what is to come as opposed to hearing what is to come. We appreciate that.
Well, quickly reiterate before I introduce our civil engineer, just, our goal really was to kind of mend some parts of the neighborhood that we thought really needed some help, and looking forward to that coming of the improvements along the parkway. Those are real big design goals.
Very well, thank you.
And I speak to you from a more technical perspective.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening, sir.
Can you put this site plan? Thank you, Cliff. For the record, Brian Gudrow with Hancock Associates. We are the civil engineers on this project. So I'm just going to kind of go over the technical aspects very quickly of the site. Cliff did a fantastic job describing the project as a whole. As he had described, it's the existing food pantry building, which is primarily a parking lot and a loading dock. And what we've done with the site is, in the existing condition, our design primarily focuses on stormwater, right? So right now, the entire parking lot drains into catch basins that go out into the combined municipal system in Broadway Street. So that's sanitary sewer and storm sewer. In the proposed condition, we're actually taking all of the roof runoff, as well as anything that would come out of the parking lot underneath the building, and put it into an underground infiltration system. And that's located kind of on the left-hand side of the building. There's an L of green space, so it's going to be actually underneath kind of the amenity space and landscaping in that area. We've been in contact with Lowell Regional Waste Water Utility and had some back-and-forth with Mike Stewart's team, and we've pretty much settled on the design. That's before you today. He has approved that. Existing utilities are off of Schaefer Street, and we're going to maintain those connections so that's electric, telecommunications, as well as sanitary sewer. There is a small loading area located off of Broadway, kind of to the left-hand side of the building. It's colored in gray, and that's just for kind of low-volume private loading area. We are in receipt of comments with our plan, and one of the comments was trying to look at a different configuration for that loading area. And if you look at the facade, or, excuse me, the frontage along Broadway Street, it's an existing curb cut that goes into the parking lot, which will be taken up by the facade of the building. So where there is currently no on-street parking, we're proposing to install a sidewalk and then work with Lowell Police Department and DPD to potentially sign that area for no parking and loading. So net, there won't be any, a decrease of on-street parking in the neighborhood, but it will allow for potentially some pickup drop-off right at the curb line in lieu of having to pull into the earmarked loading area. Another comment that came out of the DPD review was with respect to fencing and landscaping along the butters to the left-hand side, and what we've done is we've kind of revised the fence layout to provide more screening and a more vigorous planting kind of schematic schedule, and we're happy to continue to work with DPD staff to refine those. As Cliff had noted, the revised plan went down to 52 units from 53, but the 53 parking space count is maintained, so now there's just in excess of one per 52 units. That's kind of the high-level review of the site. If there's any specific technical questions, I'll be happy to answer that. And with that, if anyone would like to, are we good? And with that, we're all set, and we're here to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that overview, and again, the site visuals. That being said, it's time I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is, hello, my name is Roseanne. I own the house in Walker Street, about 100, about 100 to 200 feet from their location. So in the, I have some, okay. I like to say, Walker Street, School Street, Broadway Street, in that area are most heavy population density, and also no parking, and also, sorry, no heavy traffic. We all know that. In the current situation, it's conjecture, totally conjecture. In the Broadway, the, you know, they talk about that. That from Walker intersection to the school intersection is about 1,044 feet. I would think if city want to approve anything, please drive there to see how about the heavy population, how about the traffic and the parking. Basically, in the current Broadway, between the Walker Street and the School Street, no parking. You go there, you can see no parking and the traffic. There are two intersections. Basically, there's a small convenience store, whatever. So it's very hard to find parking place, okay? This is my point. The second, so I really hope when city try to approve any project, please, the picture looks very beautiful. Please drive there to look around. How badly traffic, how badly parking spots, especially it's next to the UMass Law. So many, you know, the traffic and the speeding on the Walker Street, people speeding and no parking. Walker Street, there's only one parking sign, okay? Street, there's only one parking sign, okay? So that area, this is three point, and also they mentioned that, they are going to, they said it's only about 0.6 acre. I cannot imagine, in the 0.6 acre, they are going to build the house with the 53 unit. I cannot imagine, how can they do that? And also, they mentioned that the 53, the unit, they are going to give each unit one parking, okay? But they have one-by-room, two-by-room, and three-by-room, how about the other parking spots? How about the actual parking, the car? Where they are going to park? They are going to also give the burden to current already heavy traffic and no parking spots. And also, the building next to the canal, too close, what's the effect to the environment for the canal? And about parking, as I said, oh, there's only 0.6 acre, they are going to add up 53 unit, and plus parking, please go there, I don't think they can do that, in that small area. And also trash, where they are going to, they are going to create a lot of trash. Now, the current situation, without they are building, build any building, no parking, traffic in the current situation, and the heavy conjecture and heavy population, so where they are going to put trash? How about the snowplow? And also after they build, and then they left, they leave, and then they going to left all the mess to the neighborhood and to the low-city government. So I strongly against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate you coming out. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Deb Chasse, and I'm the Executive Director at House of Hope and House of Hope Housing, and a Lowell resident and homeowner. I am here to speak in favor of Boston Capital's proposed residential building at 733 Broadway. I support this proposal because it is a great reuse of an industrial site. It will provide sorely needed new and affordable housing for modestly employed residents of Lowell. It will decrease competition for the limited number of currently available affordable housing by targeting those at 60% of median income, thereby freeing up some of the stock for families at 30% and below. These are the families that House of Hope serves. Boston Capital and House of Hope have agreed that several of the units will be targeted to homeless families. House of Hope has been supported by Boston Capital since 2004. In fact, they were the first private funder of our internship program in 2012, which teaches homeless parents marketable skills in both retail and the sales industry, as well as dietary services. This gift alone is in excess of $40,000 each year. The employees of Boston Capital also adopt many of our homeless families during the Christmas season, and I suspect House of Hope is not their only benefactor. A former principal of Boston Capital has served on House of Hope's Board of Directors for more than 15 years, and was a former president of House of Hope's Board of Directors. His involvement has strengthened our ability to embrace owning, building, and self-managing 39 units of permanent housing for formerly homeless families. House of Hope has worked with Davis Square Architects on multiple projects, and they have always been attentive to our neighborhood needs. So, I thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts, and I have to tell you, it is far less stressful being here as a proponent rather than an applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you coming out tonight. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Favor?
We do have a few people online that are looking to speak in favor.
Good evening.
Good evening Chairman Perrin, fellow board members. I'm Amy Pesia, I'm privileged to serve as the Executive Director at Merrimack Valley Food Bank, and we currently occupy the space at 733 Broadway Street. We love our community, the neighborhood, we love the property because it was given to us back in 1995 by the Stagman family that ran Lowell Fruit Company. Our increase in food distribution over the years requires more deliveries that are made via tractor-trailer. We receive up to 10 deliveries weekly, and at times there are four to five tractor-trailer trucks at one time trying to get into our parking lot, backing up the traffic on Broadway Street, and then as a result, Walker and surrounding streets. We acknowledge that there are challenges in the traffic in the area, but since the Pawtucket Canal, the Pawtucket Street Bridge is open, we have seen improvements. However, the tractor-trailer traffic that I'm describing is not nearly, or the passenger-vehicle traffic that will result from these beautiful housing units that are being proposed, will not compare to the inconvenience of these tractor-trailers. Development of the 733, 735 Broadway Street property by Boston Capital makes sense for all involved, the acre, immediate neighbors, those families needing conveniently located affordable housing, and the food bank, because we're actively seeking a place to better operate our food distribution mission, which I'll repeat, is growing exponentially as people need more help. We urge you to consider accepting this project, and we try to be as good neighbors as we can, and it just makes sense that this property be developed into affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming tonight. Any others wishing to speak in favor?
I think that's all we had.
That's all?
Yeah.
Okay. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed, any others wishing to speak? That portion of public hearing is now closed, I'd like to open up to the board members. Dennis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few questions, but I'm overwhelmed with the attention to aesthetics on this project, and just really feel it would be a privilege to see this go forward tonight. For me, as an architect, seeing something of this skill and level to be developed in this site would be tremendous, especially with the concept of retaining the old pieces of mill building that are there, and incorporating them into the fabric of the new project. I just want to ask a couple of questions about the massing changes, since we are seeing them for the first time tonight. I'm not sure if the architect from Davis Square could maybe address those a little bit, but it seems to be that the fourth level is being brought in quite a bit. What kind of dimension are we talking about for relief there?
Well, the, actually, you're right, the fourth level was brought in, I think it's two to three feet, but we brought in also the top two levels, it's kind of complicated, but the facade along Ting Street was much flatter in the previous version, and when we started to speak with Steve and the other architects, they really pushed correctly so for more articulation. So along that elevation, we have more articulation from the furthest forward piece to the furthest back piece, I think it's five, five or six feet. But the idea was to pick up the rhythm, to not imitate a mill building, but really get a kind of rhythm that is, you know, common in mill structures, you know, repetitive patterns on long elevations. We clear, the other idea was carry the very strong horizontal cornice line of the three-story piece along the senior housing development, carry that line all the way to the front of the building on Broadway, and wrap it around as a kind of shoulder. So we increased the setback in two places along Broadway to create that kind of stronger center entry to match the, actually, five center entry buildings that are to the west of it.
Okay. How is that impacting? So you said you went from 53 units to 52 units?
Yeah.
But I noticed you've incorporated common space on the different floors, so you have a gym, workshop area?
Yep.
I think laundry as well?
Yep.
Incorporated into each one of those floor levels?
We did, we did. Yeah, and we have a variety of programming that we think will work well with the residents, we have a kind of makers' space within the building, and then more typical types of common spaces. We're limited, the funding program is low-income housing tax credit fundings, or there's some pretty tight limits on dollars that you can spend, so there's only so much space that you can really dedicate for common space, but I think we've kind of maxed it out in this one, you know, for the benefit of the residents.
Sure, that's tremendous. The, let me see what I was gonna say, the unit number went from 53 to 52, so is that one of the three-bedroom units that's being deleted? I think you only had maybe five.
No, we actually added three, so we had to kind of jigger the whole bedroom count. The typical, again, back to the funding source, which is really makes this type of housing happen, you try to hit right around 10% three-bedroom units. So we were a little shy in the first iteration when we were at 53, and now we're very close to being spot-on with 10% threes.
Got it, okay. All right. The variances that are being asked for tonight from the board seem to really all go to the site plan, I think, as far as. So maybe I could just ask a couple of questions of the civil engineer, if we could, to understand what we're doing with this two, what's it called, the pathway two that we're doing, right? So on the site plan, we're looking for a variance on, I think, dimensional requirements, we can understand that quite a bit. Landscaping, could you speak a little bit to the landscaping, please, that we're lacking? Because there seems to be a landscaping plan submitted, but then it quite changes quite a bit when you look at the renderings, and I'm not quite sure whether there's a landscape plan that's in front of us tonight, and we're looking for relief on landscaping, so I just want to kind of understand that, if we could.
Correct. So we've issued a schematic landscape plan that shows intent, so we're showing places where we feel we need vegetative cover, screening, and streetscape beautification. So the sheet shows the intent, what it doesn't have is specific planting species and counts, and typically it's, what we like to do is to condition that to work with DPD staff, and as the building comes together during construction period, we refine the actual landscape design to meet the intent of what was approved. So the relief that we're requesting is with respect to landscaping along the Broadway Street frontage between the facade and the sidewalk. When the first iteration of the plan was developed, we didn't know where the sidewalk was gonna fall with respect to the right-of-way and the front facade, and we're obviously asking for front yard relief as well, dimensionally.
Could I ask you to speak into the mic a little bit, I'm having a little trouble hearing.
Sorry. So along the Broadway Street side, we've earmarked from the back of the sidewalk to the facade of the building, there's a 50% requirement, we're right at that threshold, so it would be prudent for us to request a relief to make sure that if we do in fact fall underneath it, that we are covered. It is our intent to landscape from the sidewalk to the facade, and then obviously there is loading area and sidewalks in there as well.
Okay, all right, perfect. And I just want to be clear that your landscaping schematic doesn't show trees in that slot of green space, roughly 20-foot-wide slot of green space on the west end, well, the spot that goes between the properties, residential properties, right? And I think that's largely because it's all infiltration, and probably you can't do trees?
Correct. So in the area, the kind of angled L from Schaefer to Broadway, that's, it's common area, it's amenity space for the residents, as much as it is landscaping and kind of screening for the butters. So there's a pathway in there from Schaefer down to Broadway, fencing kind of restricting it to residents, and then there's a patio sitting area, kind of play area for children, things like that. So we did landscape, and we did provide green space and green hardscape, but not tree cover per se.
Right. The renderings do kind of show trees there, but they're not going to be able to be supported partly because of the nature of the infiltration that we need for drainage?
Correct.
Right, okay. All right, great. And so we're really looking for the relief just on that small piece on Broadway Street that we have for the landscaping, okay?
Yep.
And then we have dimensional requirements, I saw that on the site plan, there's a substantial amount of dimensional requirement changes here, but it is a significant project that is sorely needed, I think 52 residential units are tremendous. The parking that you did in the garage, is that still 53 spaces?
It is still 53 spaces.
Okay. So we're still gonna be able to do that, and you do have bike storage in the garage?
There is interior bike storage in the garage. There's also interior trash, I know trash had been mentioned previously.
And is there also additional spaces? So the 53 spaces dedicated to the units, will those be dedicated, how will they be dedicated to the units, I guess?
By unit?
Okay.
Rich can speak to that.
Additional spaces, so 53.
So in terms of the parking spaces, the way we'll operate that is at lease signing, for each resident, they'll have the option to have a space reserved.
So it would be reserved, I think that was one of the conditions that was suggested by the planning development, that, so they will be reserved for the units?
It will be, yes, it will be the resident's option to reserve the space, they can of course decline it, in which case that space could be used for some, another unit.
And then you have additional units beyond that for the units themselves, the 52 units that will be potentially ride-share?
So additional parking spaces for ride-share, that's what we're considering now, if we can squeeze a couple of spaces for ride-share.
Wow. You got it all.
We're trying.
All right. Did I notice how you're dealing with trash receptacles or dumpsters on the site? I don't know if I noticed that on this, that's in the garage, I take it?
Correct. So if you look at the Ting Street entrance, as you pull into the parking garage on the right-hand side, that's the bike storage area, and on the left-hand side, there's an earmarked kind of rectangular space for interior trash pickup. So it's intended for roll-away cars, come trash, they private pickup, they'll be rolled outside the building, and then once picked up, moved back in.
Doesn't look like a lot of space, but you've pretty much decided that you're gonna be able to get adequate trash storage there for the 52 units and not take away any parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay. Amazing. All right, I am satisfied, now I understand what you're looking for for variances, and I'm really thrilled with this presentation. Thank you very much, very thorough, and amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With a project of this magnitude, I, I think it's a great addition to the city. Unfortunately, I couldn't see the presentation that was, that looked very well since my screen wasn't working.
Fully noted.
But I do, but I do appreciate the, the presentation. I think this is, is a great project, and obviously would impact the, the neighborhood and the city tremendously. And, you know, the fact that most people, you know, are in favor of this project, I, I think it's, 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 it would be a great benefit. You always have to consider, you know, both sides, and the fact is, when you hear people oppose of any project, you always wonder. And I think one of the things that was mentioned was traffic, which in the city of Lowell is, is a huge problem. And that Broadway Street is, is also impacted. I, I know you mentioned that you are going to implement a traffic plan, so I'm assuming that hasn't been done yet, but do you have an ETA as to when that's gonna be instituted?
Thank you for the comment. So this discussion came up at Planning Board on Monday last week regarding traffic, and we have, we're actually engaging a traffic engineer right now, TEC. Planning Board also asked it for a peer review of that report. So that's why, at, at that Planning Board meeting, we continued the discussion till, I think it's February 24th, to give us time to get the traffic report done. They will also do a transportation demand management plan as part of that, and, and then get the peer review done. So that is in process.
Oh, great. I, I think sometimes a lot of opposition is because of traffic. From just my short experience being on this board, a lot of the big projects seems to always come between traffic and snow removal and trash. So I, I appreciate you guys taking the attention for that. And I assume you're also working as, as, from what I understand, I know you, you made some changes or, uh, to tonight's presentation, and you are working with the historical board on the approval of some of those changes, or it won't impact what you are doing with the historical board?
Do you want to address that, Cliff?
Yes, and yes, again. We've found our first, first meeting to be incredibly useful, and I think really helped the project tremendously. They have the new plans in hand, and I talked to Steve this morning about setting up the next time when we can get together with them, but we're, I think we've got a good relationship with them and intend to not stop until we're, we're all happy with the design.
Oh, okay, that's great. I guess the ZB is the only one that hasn't have an updated plan yet, right? Thank you very much. Like I said, I think this would be a great project long-term, and I'm looking forward to seeing it completed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, George Van.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, thank you for the, for the thorough presentation. You know, I, I think it is a good reuse and repurpose of, of the site, you know, affordable housing. As, as we all know, housing is needed in the city. I, I do wanna talk a little bit about the, the parking and the traffic. I don't want to belabor this, but could you just go over again, 53 units, so there's gonna be an increase of, not just, you know, foot traffic, but like cars and, and all that? And, and you said you have a plan that, that you're gonna present to the Planning Board, and that's gonna be out in February, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So, and we'll obviously share that with this board as well. So that, that report will be engaged with the Engineering Corp., TEC. They're highly experienced with that type of study. We'll look at the conclusions. The Planning Board did ask for a peer review by someone engaged by the city. I, I believe the Planning Board will engage. So we will be back to present that as part of our updated plan. So we, to clarify, we do not have any, we don't have conclusions from any traffic studies at this point, and we'll, we will present those at the next, the next time we come in front of the board.
Okay. That, that sounds good, thank you, sir. So I'll just wait to see, at least for me, Mr. Chairman, I'll wait to see the parking study and the parking plan and traffic impact in that street, as, as we all know, it's a busy intersection, so. But overall, I think this is a good project, and, you know, very well deserved for this building and for the city, the, the four of housing units. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you through, Mr. Chairman. Overall, I like the project. I think it's, would be beneficial to the city, certainly when we need more affordable housing, and we're in such a crunch for it. But there's a lot of relief being requested for variance approval, and I guess the question needs to be asked, because a lot of the variance relief that's being requested is based on the size of the project and the number of units. So, for example, we have, you know, dimensional lot area per dwelling unit. You're asking 52 units now, it is? 52 new, two units?
Correct.
But rounding it off, I mean, it's 4,000 square, square feet per dwelling unit, we're asking for 52 units, which would require over 200,000 a square feet in the lot, which, and you're providing 27,000 and change. That's a, a big, that's a big, a lot of relief to ask. Also, the usable open space, based on the units. The requirement is 500 square feet per dwelling unit, which for 26,500 square feet, so, and you're providing 5,0936. You're also asking for relief for maximum height and maximum stories. So I guess the question, and just, this is just for the public's perspective and for public information, why 52 units? Why do we have to, why do we have to go to four stories? Why 52 units? Why, I mean, I understand, there's any for affordable housing, but there's a lot of relief being requested, and I, I just want to, for the public's perspective, why do, why so many units?
Sure. I mean, I can, I can comment on a couple of aspects of that, and I think I'll, I'll ask others to chime in as well. From the perspective of developing affordable housing, you, you do achieve economies, economies of scale with projects of this size or larger, frankly. I mean, ideally, you know, a project is 80 to 100 units. This site clearly cannot support that unless we went up additional levels. So that's how we, we settled on a four-story building, and, and then also looking at parking to provide any meaningful type of parking on site under a building in a podium. Again, you, you need to have a critical mass of units to support the development cost. So part of it is really the, the economics of trying to provide affordable housing, and, and balancing that, of course, with the neighborhood and the, you know, the, the location of this project, as I think, as Cliff described very well, we, we do feel that this is appropriate in light of the, the overall neighborhood and, and also the adjacent property, the Lowell Housing Authority property. It's consistent in terms of height. It really acts as a bookend to that neighborhood, and we, you know, we do feel, feel strongly that it will be a, a big improvement to the streetscape of the, of the area. Any technical comments, Bill?
Sure. I, I guess that pretty much sums it up. I, I would add that we think, you know, this is sort of how Lowell was developed, right? I mean, you have mill building, you know, the old Pilling Shoe Building, and a neighborhood grows up around the mill, you know? People used to walk to work. And this project, I think, was designed to be sensitive to that, you know, to try and fit in with the mill, you know, preserve the mill's facade, and create something that's comparable to what's there already, and not, and, and be affordable, something that we could construct without being burdensome to the neighborhood. So we will come back with the traffic report and the management plan, but we are confident that will show that this project will benefit and not increase the burden to the neighborhood. It will add affordable housing that's much needed, and it will contain all of the uses and burdens within the site.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Martin. Thank you. Thank you for the answer. Again, I just, for the purposes of getting it out in the public to get an idea of what, from, from the scale of the project and why so many, why so many units and why, because the relief you're asking is extensive, and, you know, we do have to take that into account as to what's being, what's, what's being proposed. And again, I, I, like I said off the, off the thing, I'm, I'm generally in approval of the, of the project, but I think for the purposes of public's, public knowledge, we need to get, get an idea of, from the, your perspective, as to why so many units are being proposed and, and why so much relief is being requested. So that being said, one other question I did have is like, is, is it gonna be onsite management as far as the, you said it's gonna be rentals, I presume, right? You said, you mentioned leases, so.
Correct.
Is it gonna be onsite management for the property as far as leasing is concerned and whatnot?
Yes, we will have, we will have onsite management. It is 100% rental. We have a management office, so that will be staffed full-time during business hours during the week, and we'll also have maintenance onsite.
Okay, so there's a management, there's gonna be a management office onsite?
Yes, there will be.
Location? Okay, 'cause I didn't, I don't think I saw that on the, I don't think, I don't remember seeing that on the floor plans that that was proposed out there, or is that, or is that on the?
That is on the first floor, on the Broadway side. Really before you get to the parking area, there's a management office, community room. I think there's restrooms, mailroom.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the floor plan again here. 'Cause I do remember seeing something. Is that the, so is that the space on the first, proposed second-floor plan? This first, first floor is gonna be the parking, correct?
This is the Broadway side.
Okay. I was looking at it from the floor plan's perspective, because... Okay, all right. I see on the site plan, sorry, it's, so, okay, so it is on the first floor. I'm sorry, I was looking, I was looking at the wrong, I was looking at the floor plans. I missed out on that, that part of it, so. Yeah, okay, again, I, like I said, I generally am in agreement with this, I just wanted to make sure we're got everything, everything lined up in a row, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. So you've heard the comments and obviously indication of how we need to move forward here as far as getting particular plans in line. The only other one question I have that was brought up by a speaker tonight is snow. So the, it's gonna be a cover garage, so snow removal is just gonna be any internal pathways, and then your obligation to the city sidewalks. Is that correct?
Correct.
And with onsite maintenance, is that something that they will maintain? Be part of their duty scope, I would imagine, or maybe a private contractor?
We would work with our management company to, to determine whether to do it with staff or contract it out.
Okay. All right. So I, I agree, I think this, this project, Council of Martin, you know, just wrapped it up eloquently. The mills were, they're part of our structure, they're, they're what binds us to this community, and we built around them centuries ago, and we're building and living in them now. And the adaptation that you presented tonight with your conversion, and clearly your, your overall concerns of the city, the historical value, and then finally, the resident value that that's gonna bring to our city is, makes this project something I believe is, is overdue. And I think that I've done, I've, yeah, I've looked at your plans, and you, you tend to strive to these types of buildings. You have, you have that in your portfolio, so I look forward to the outcome. I do appreciate the historical outline, 'cause that does bring the character of the neighborhood into play. In creating that additional open space separation for that resident, it's gonna be a breath, breath of fresh air. It's like, you know, you're gonna blow out that freezer building, and you're just gonna open up that open, that, that green space, and it's gonna, it's gonna flow nicely, I believe, so. I'm in strong favor of this. I wish you the best of luck. Any other concerns or comments from the board?
We just have the one condition for the parking?
Correct.
Dennis, did you want to add something in there about ride-share, or?
No, no, I think that if we could just say something to the, you know, I'm a little, I'm a little surprised that we are gonna be that tight with the parking, because one per tenant is 52, and you only have 53 spaces, so you really don't have a ride-share if you had every, every unit taking a space. So you're really relying on a couple of the units not taking a space in order to throw in the ride-share, but I think is what I'm hearing.
Well, we, we would not sacrifice a space per unit for ride-share, so that's what we're trying to balance.
Yeah, so I think we really can't, Sean, kind of push the ride-share, because it's really about the tenants getting the spaces, right? You know what I mean?
I, I was just curious about, so the driving, the driveway is gonna be on Ting Street. I don't know, Fran, is this something, the possibility that they can work with the city with regards to, I don't know, I don't know if the parking situation on Ting Street is, if there's a, you know, some, some way they can reserve something on, as far as pickup, drop-off, or ride-share, or is that a possibility, or?
For, I know that the city does have signs for like pickup, drop-off. I don't think that we can reserve a city space for ride-share, but for like deliveries and things like that, I know that there are like loading zones, so maybe a, a condition that's pretty flexible could be added. And then if we can't work something out, they would go back before the board.
Applicant work with the city to determine possibility of drop-off, drop-off pickup spot for ride-share? I don't know, is that something?
Sure.
I don't know, that's what my fellow, I don't know if that's something my fellow board members would go with. I think, I think it would be beneficial to the, to the project, certainly. I mean, especially since we're going 50%, we're asking, they're asking 50% relief from the parking, so.
I just wanted to mention that we have this Lowell Housing Authority project, the, the mill behind. I think there's probably 50 spaces or less designated to that building, and I'm guessing there's 60, 70 units in there.
Yeah.
So we sort of have a precedent in this location for reduced parking already that seems to be manageable.
Yeah, okay. So just, just leave ride-share to, to what it is, I guess, and let the applicant work with it? Okay. I was just bringing that up to see if that was something we can throw in.
Okay, any other comments or concerns, any other board members? None being heard. May I have a motion, Mr. Clark?
And just to, just to verify, Fran, we're not, we don't, they don't need relief under section 8.1 for the historic conversion, correct?
I believe they're pursuing the special permit under 4.5 for conversion of non-conforming structure to another, non-conforming structure.
Okay, I thought I heard Attorney Martin mention that they don't, you don't need it, correct?
We're gonna, we're gonna strike.
Correct, correct. We're not going under 8.1.
Yep, okay, all right. So, all right, so through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-55 for 733-735 Broadway Street for variance approval under section 5.1 for lot area per dwelling unit, front yard setback, usable... 5.1 for lot area per dwelling unit, front yard setback, usable open space per dwelling unit, maximum height, maximum stories, section 5.2 for corner clearance, section 5.3 for landscaped open space and usable open space, and section 6.1 for off-street parking to redevelop a historic mill building into 52-unit residential building.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Sorry, with the previous, with the condition. The applicant shall reserve, either reserve spaces for each dwelling unit or only allow access to the parking area via a parking pass to residents to ensure each resident has one parking space.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Member McCarthy. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve a condition.
Member Peck.
Approve a conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve a conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve a condition.
Member Briere.
Recusal.
Oh. Member Proko.
Approve a condition.
Congratulations, sir. You've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in and board. And thank you to your, your team for articulating in your, in your drawings. It means a great deal.
Motion, but do you want to second it?
Moving forward under new business, we have a variance ZBA 2021-56 for variance. Chuck and Vanna Sart at 208 Parkview Avenue, section 6.1.10. Chuck and Vanna Sart have applied to the zoning board of appeals to construct a driveway within the side and building setback of 208 Park Ave. Parkview Ave, the property is located in suburban single-family SSF zoning district and requires variance approval under section 6.1.10 for any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the petitioner here this evening? We have a communication of a continuance. Good evening, sir. How are you? Will you state your name and address for the record and a little bit about your position?
My name is Chuck Sart and my wife is Vanna Sart. We are the homeowners at 208 Parkview Avenue in Lowell, Massachusetts. We have been at, we have been the owners for 14 years. And I thought tonight, the Ian from the Lancer was supposed to present it via Zoom. Was that been arranged?
Do we have a, we have a?
He is online.
Okay. Good evening, sir. If you could tell us a little bit about the project? Sir, you're on mute. If you could unmute and state your name and address for the record.
Let me try this to see if that's easier.
There you are, sir. Good evening. If you state your name and address for the record, tell us a little bit about your petition.
Sure. So my name is Ian Ainsley. I'm an engineer from Asabram, working for the applicant, Mr. Sart. I'm just going to pull up my screen if I can to pull up the plan. Okay, so this is an existing single-family house in the suburban, single-family district. The owner, the applicant, Chuck, who is in front of you now, wanted to build a driveway. Him and his contractor, they applied for a curb cut permit and received it. They also replied for a driveway permit. The driveway permit was rejected because of a dimensional issue. In the zoning driveway regulations, you need to have three feet from a building, three feet from a property line, and the driveway itself has to be at least eight feet in width. If you add those up, that's 14 feet. And we have a scenario right now where between the existing building and the property line is 10 feet. So it's kind of an issue with the narrow lot here to meet the dimensional requirement. So when they rejected the permit, they asked us to come obtain a variance, which is what we're here to do now. I do want to point out that the rear of the lot in the vicinity of the house was previously paved. This was existing for many years, I believe. And the intention was at the same time of paving the driveway and connecting to the street to kind of resurface that existing paved area and connect it all at once. But the key thing is that the intention is not to park and navigate up in this area. The intention is to park on the front driveway area kind of before you get to the building. So I just wanted to make that clarification. I, I know engineering will look at it as one continuous piece, but that's not really the intention. And I guess, I guess that's it. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Well, I, I would like to further speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
As the owner of the home, I just want to say that, you know, we've been there for 14 years and on the hill where all the houses along, on our side, every, every single home in that, on that side on the hill have a driveway longer than what we proposed at 50 feet from the front of our house to the street. So we've been living in a home that has no driveway and during big snowstorm, you know, we had to find our ways to, we had to ask our neighbors to park our vehicles. So that has been the burden on, you know, hardship and burden for us. So after 14 year, we, you know, we, we decided to that we, we need to get a driveway so that we can have appropriate parking space for our, for our vehicle. And so this is, you know, I'm asking for the relief to obtain this variant for the side of the house, which was never intended to be a driveway. And we want to complete this project because it has been a year. We were, we were approved of the curb cut in October and then a week later we were denied. So we, we would kindly request that the board give consideration for us to, as a homeowner, as a, you know, resident on the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your words. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My, my name is Ellen Collins and I am Chuck and Poe's next door neighbor. I live at 212 Parkview Avenue in Lowell and my father has owned the house next door to Chuck's since 1962. I believe that you should grant Chuck's request. He's an excellent neighbor, very helpful to everybody in the neighborhood. I've had a chance to watch this project unfold. I can attest to the fact that they do not use the part of their, the paving along the side and behind the house as a driveway. It's more like, the back is more like a patio. Ever since I was a child, the part that they repaved has been paved. And in fact, there was a sidewalk alongside of Chuck's house. One of the reasons Chuck told me they did this was that there were cracks in the sidewalk and it was just easier to repave the entire thing rather than doing, you know, cement in the back. And in fact, our yard is kind of, our backyard is structured the same way. We have a, the wide side of our lot is the driveway side. In Chuck's case, his lot's narrower than ours. So I would ask that you, you know, waive, waive the requirements and grant the variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out tonight, ma'am, speaking in favor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Any others wishing to speak? That portion is now closed. Like to open up to the board? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sart, I can empathize with you not having a driveway. And I'm sure with you building this driveway that your neighbors would be happy that they don't have to park your cars. I, I do have one question though. It was noted here that part of the driveway paving encroached on the adjacent property. Is that the case or is that not the case?
That is, that is the case based on.
The engineer speaking?
I, I believe the, I think that was Ian.
Yes, so that was me. Yes, we, we did a land survey out there. There is a very small portion. You can barely even see it on the plan. It's less than a foot over the line. You know, and as part of this, and I'm sure as part of the driveway permit, that small portion, that's an encroachment, would be removed. They have to finish the driveway and connect it to the street anyway. So there's some work to be done to complete it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Other than that, I, again, I, I think this is, this is probably well-deserved. You've been in the neighborhood for a very long time and I guess it would only add to what's already there. So I would vote in favor of this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, George Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it appears as though some unfortunate missteps have occurred along the way and it's caused some real inconvenience, the greatest of which was to you, the homeowner. So you're here to do the right thing this evening. I think the board could find its way to grant the necessary relief and give you the driveway that you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Fran?
Three, Mr. Chairman. To me, it's pretty straightforward. Mr. Sart, you know, sorry for any inconvenience. I think this totally makes sense. The driveway, it fits in with the rest of the neighborhood, the, the existing properties around it. So we wish you the very best of luck. I'll be approving tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions for the, is it the civil engineer that is the gentleman that's on the Zoom?
Yes. Yep.
So I'm very familiar with this property. I knew the family that owned it before our current applicant for many, many years. So I always struggled with that site because there's no parking, off-street parking. Very, very unfortunate situation. So the parking, the pavement that's being put in is going to drain directly onto Parkview Ave. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So is that going to increase the water going into the catch basins on Parkview Ave?
Yes, I would expect it would.
Okay. Do, do we have any comments from the engineering department regarding the runoff into, I guess?
All the comments we've received are in the memo.
Right. And I don't see anything from Michael Stewart over at the water depart, I don't know, maybe?
Right. I, they did not have any comments. They don't usually have comments for single-family homes when they're not under conservation commission jurisdiction. They don't usually have comments for those ones, but.
Do you know if we have to worry about the addition? Because it's a lot of pavement and it's running into the street at a high rate with that, that amount of?
Right. We didn't get any comments. So you could potentially condition, if you choose to approve it, on ensuring that stormwater team is.
Onboard with the?
Onboard with it. Yeah.
Yes, I'd love to do that.
Okay.
Especially with the water cutting across Parkview into the neighbor's property. I just don't want to see anything that we've, okay. So I, I would just like to have that one condition, that the water department or the engineering department review the plans and have satisfied their requirements for drainage. If that's okay. Okay.
Could I interject? As their neighbor, I'm the downhill neighbor. As, as you recall, the street runs downhill and it used to go Dick, Dartley, Collins. What, what currently would drain down the new driveway probably currently drains down my driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Because my driveway drains the neighborhood. It drains the hill.
Sure.
So I don't think there'll be any additional water, quite frankly.
I, I hope not. And I really want this to go forward because I really think they should have parking in this manner. But I just don't want to do something here that we are going to regret down the road. If, if there needs to be any mitigation for drainage, I just want to make sure we understand it. That's all. But maybe there isn't. Maybe there doesn't need to be. It's not a big amount of pavement. I just know that it's a steep slope.
Yes. There has, there has always been.
Yeah.
A drainage problem.
Yeah.
On that hill.
Yeah.
And the drainage problem has significantly worsened since the people who lived behind our houses on Holy Road put in driveways and paved their backyards. That is the beginning of the drainage problem and results in cracks, cement, lots of runoff. And they need to do repairs in basements, et cetera. So the drainage problem is already there.
Okay. Understood.
And if anything draining down Chuck's driveway, you know, will mitigate some of the issues with my driveway.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further questions. I, I really hope this goes forward, but I just think we just have that one condition. If that's satisfactory. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this, this totally makes sense. And, you know, reviewing the property, you know, onsite and even looking up on Google Maps. I mean, Mr. Sart, you pointed, you pointed out what I was going to say is like all your other neighbors, everyone in the area has driveways except for you. And have a, it should be beneficial to you to get the, to help, it helps, it's be beneficial to the city to get the two cars off, two more cars off the street, especially during snowstorms and, you know, and it's, you know, it's been a hindrance for you. It's, like you said, during the snowstorms where you had to, you know, have the assistance of your neighbors to get your cars off the streets when there's, you know, states of emergency or snow emergencies or whatnot. So, but this makes, this makes total sense. And as long as you're, in agreement with the condition that Dennis proposed, I would be in approval of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. So the wish of the board, the words of the board is move forward with the vote. We have one condition. Is it really stormwater? Are you in agreeance with that, sir?
I don't know how much of an impact, you know, my driveway, because my driveway is fairly high compared to other driveway in the neighborhood. They, you know, they vary, they dip very low.
Mm-hmm.
And because, because we are on the hill, but Holy Road, which behind us is higher up. So the water, you know, and we have, our backyard have a lot of trees. So I mean, the whole, I mean, the whole, so I mean, the impact of the water, I, I don't really know how much, if any, you know, more than before. But I, I, I mean, I, we did, you know, got rid of some of the green space in our yard, which is, you know, it's helped absorb the water. So, but I don't know how much of an impact because even down, I mean, on the, on Parkview Avenue, it flowed down. I mean, the drain is like go down from, you know, from, if you look at my house, from left to right, all the way is down, you know?
Yeah.
But I would, I mean, you know, I, I.
So will you be in agreeance with the stormwater review as a, as a condition?
I couldn't, I couldn't understand you.
Were you, are you in agreeance with, your approval must have us just a stormwater review as a condition?
Yeah, that.
Okay. We'll have that in for a condition. We can move through.
That's fine.
That being said, may I have a motion, Mr. Clark?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-56 for 208 Parkview Ave for variance approval under section 6.1.10 for minimum side yard, or minimum side yard and building setbacks to construct a driveway within the existing side yard and building setbacks with the condition that the, Dennis said, water department or engineering department review plans and offer approval for storm drainage.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by George. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve a condition.
Member Peck.
Approve a conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve a condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve a condition.
Member Briere.
Approved with condition.
Member Proko.
Approve a condition.
Sir, you've been approved for your driveway. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully. Hopefully you won't need to shovel that much this winter. Moving forward under ZBA 2021-57. Thank you, sir. Uh, we got a special permit, Beth Israel Leahy Health Behavioral Services at 259 Baldwin Street, section 4.5. Beth Israel Health Behavioral Services is applied to zoning board of appeals to operate a residential recovery home for women with a substance use disorder and their children at 259 Baldwin Street. The property is located in suburban, single-family SSF zoning district and requires a special permit under section 4.5 to change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use and for any other relief required on those zoning owners. Good evening, Counselor, how are you?
Good evening, Chairman Perrin, members of the board. Doing fine, thank you. Hope all of you are doing well and getting ready for the holidays and all. My name is, for the record, is Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorm Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent Beth Israel Leahy Health Behavioral Services, who are before you this evening for a special permit to convert, a, a, a special permit pertaining to section 4.5 to change from one non-conforming use to another. The property we're talking about is on 259 Baldwin Street. The home for many, many years of Town and Country Nursing Home. What, what Beth Israel would like to do, they currently have a program for residential recovery, a residential recovery home for women who are in recovery that have children. The, the, the program is called the Hart House. It's housed in Tewksbury currently, on the grounds of Tewksbury State Hospital. But for whatever reason, the, the state wants their, their land back, so this Hart House is, is looking for a home. With me this evening is Matt Hammer from Landplex, who we all know. Also Hillary Jacobs. Hillary is the president of Beth Israel Leahy Health Behavioral Services. So, and Hillary will be explaining in a little bit more detail of the program. If I could just go over a couple of things. There's also one thing that you would note in the December 7th memo from Francesca pertaining to one parking spot. We, we came out, you know, we had 38.84 parking spaces, or we only had 38 spaces, so we'd be requesting obviously a variance from the board for the one parking spot as well. So this week, this program, this Hart House, is for women who are in recovery who have children. As, as you can imagine, it's a difficult thing. And if they don't have a family setting, then they are likely to lose their children. What this program does is keep families together, which I think is a major, major important thing in the city, for any great community, to try to keep families together, promote families. The program is capped at 15 women. If you're familiar with the nursing home or the Town and Country on Baldwin Street, I believe there were 45 rooms there. So this would be capped at 15 women. There are, I think, 23 young children that are there. There would be no personal vehicles. They have vans to transport people if the women to, if they need to go to appointments or what have you. So it's not like, so the parking would be obviously more than adequate. There's, in your package, a lease proposal with a landlord who is an LLC, not a nonprofit, which is another boost to the city, because obviously the city will continue to get taxes from this, from this endeavor. There'll be 19 full-time staff. They'll be there 24/7, maximum of seven onsite at any one time. As you'll note again from the memo of December 7th from Francesca and, and DPD, it's a very, very positive memo. Clearly, I think the city and DPD staff feel that this would be a good, a good thing to do on, on that property. I would suggest that that property, which is a big piece of property, could have many, many different uses there, which would be adverse to the neighborhood. This is one that I don't, we don't think would be adverse. We think it'd be quite, quite docile, actually. Another good thing about the Hart, the Hart House is it was recognized recently, I think in two years in a row now, by Newsweek Magazine as the sixth-ranked addition treatment center in Massachusetts for 2021, which they're very, very proud of. On Saturday, November 20th, Hillary and her people held an informational, informal informational gathering, if you will, at the site. Passed out approximately 50 some odd flyers through the neighborhood. Had a few neighbors show up, but they actually, you know, they did a little outreach and wanted people to come in and ask questions and and if, and they were there, the, the whole staff was there to answer questions. My understanding is it was, it was positive from the, the few people who did show up. The only changes this would make, as you see on, on the, the plan over there that Matt has put together, is we, we would be fencing that, that like, I don't know, brown, the light brown area in the back, which would be used for playground. A fencing would go up there, and it's a small, it's obviously a small piece. So we believe that the use there would be similar to, to what's been there for many, many years, but probably less intrusive. There are no visitors. It's not like it's an open visitor thing. These, these women live there with their children, but visitors are not allowed. Ambulance visits, we think, would be very, very rare, as opposed to a nursing home where unfortunately, I'm sure there were, there were more visits by ambulances. Therefore, it'd be less traffic. Vendors would be less than, than what a nursing home would have. It would provide a social and community need in helping, again, mothers to keep their children and their family together. So we think there's no adverse effect on the neighborhood. We think it would be a good use, and we request the board to, to grant the application for a special permit. Before I introduce Hillary, I want, I do want to thank Francesca and May and Dylan and Peter from their staff. You guys, they're, they're a great staff and they, they go out of their way to help people and, you know. I was, I used to sit in boards like you and I used to like to hear, hear, hear some bad things once in a while, but these, these guys are really good. So they've been very, very helpful and I wanted to point that out. So with that, Hillary. Hillary Jacobs, president of Leahy, Beth Israel Leahy Behavioral Services.
It's a mouthful.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today for your consideration related to Hart House. My name, as you've heard, is Hillary Jacobs. I'm the president of Beth Israel Leahy Health Behavioral Services. I've been with the organization for close to six and a half years, and I started out there as the vice president of Addiction Treatment Services. Beth Israel Leahy Health is the largest provider of behavioral health services in the Northeast. We provide treatment to approximately 50,000 unduplicated people a year of all ages. We have approximately 800 employees across the Northeast geography. Prior to me becoming to Beth Israel Leahy Health, I had many roles at the Mass Department of Public Health, including as the director of the Bureau of Substance and Addiction Treatment Services. I'm a social worker by training, which to me means that I'm most interested in delivering high-quality treatment services to persons with behavioral health disorders. Hart stands for healing and recovery together. We are very proud of the program's recognition through Newsweek for the last two years in a row. We actually went up this year from number nine to number six as one of the top 10 treatment, addiction treatment centers in Massachusetts. Hart House is, as you heard, a residential treatment program for up to 15 pregnant and parenting women. So some women who are there are pregnant, waiting to have a child. Some women are there pregnant with children and some women are just there with their children. We take, we first opened this program and have continually operated it since the mid 1990s. It is for women who are recovering from substance use disorder. We accept women with children up to 17 years of age, although generally the majority of children in the program are not school-aged. It's generally women with kids under five. You know, right now, there's one child who's school-aged in the program. The women live at the program with their children and they receive treatment for their substance use disorder. While they develop parenting skills. Women who enter the program are really highly motivated to live a life free of drugs and alcohol for themselves and for their children. Women live at the program for six to nine months, so the overall volume is low. You know, we don't serve that many women over the course of a year because of the treatment length of stay. The program is licensed and fully funded by the Mass Department of Public Health through the Bureau of Substance Abuse and Addiction. And they regulate and audit the program to make sure that we are in compliance with all the treatment standards, which are quite numerous from the regulatory point of view, and also with staffing standards. The program, as you've heard, is staffed 24/7, 365 days a year. And staffing includes a program director, a psychiatrist, a clinical supervisor, family therapist, childcare coordinator, and recovery specialists. People with, all people with expertise in how to help people recover from drug and alcohol use. We provide onsite daycare, Monday through Friday, regular business days, so that women can fully participate in individual, group, and family treatment sessions during the day. Night and weekends are set aside, like any family, for family time. We have two vans that belong to that program very specifically, and they, that, they would be parked on the campus. They are used to transport, excuse me, women and children to appointments and to recreational outings on weekends. The women rarely have cars. I think I've seen one woman with one car in six years. They don't have to have cars. We can easily say they can't have cars. Visitors to the program are limited to professionals working with the women and their families. So maybe the Department of Children and Families, social worker, you know, maybe therapists from the outside who are working with some of the kids, you know? But that, it's limited, and that obviously happens during business hours, regular business hours. Our staff members participate in local coalitions, including the mayor's opioid task force in Lowell. Lowell General Hospital's Perinatal Substance Use Disorder Collaborative Community Teamwork, where one of our staff was asked to be on the board. We have a close relationship with the Lowell Department of Children and Families. And in closing, for me, this is the most important piece. Hart House changes lives. They change lives for the women that we treat, and they change lives for the children by offering critical skills and a pathway to a productive life that restores dignity and hope for a better future. So we really appreciate you considering having a new home for Hart House in Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion is now closed. Any others wishing to speak? That portion of public area is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Joanne Malisi. I live at 235 Baldwin Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. I actually just have a few questions. Where would the smoking area be?
Ma'am, if you could just speak into the microphone.
Where would the smoking area be for the residents who are staying there?
I would, I would expect that the smoking area would be on the back of the building, not in front of the street.
Okay, I live aside where the dumpster is, and when the nursing home employees would smoke, we could smell it if we were outside. So I would ask that you
Counselor?
Put it to Westford Street.
If I may?
Yes.
Yes, please, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, we will put that smoking area wherever you want it to be. Okay.
Okay, yeah, Westford Street would be fine.
Okay.
Could I, are they going to be, are there going to be structural changes? To the building? No?
You would do, you will do some more on the inside, touch them. No structural changes, and we're going to have a playground.
Where's the playground going?
Where's the playground?
What was the final question, ma'am?
I asked where the playground would be.
Oh, in the highlighted areas, as previously discussed.
Will you have to take out any trees? Will you have to take out any trees? Okay. Okay, okay, towards Westford Street. All right, and I live over here. It's toward the back, to the Westford Street. Okay. That's fine. That's fine. I would actually like, though, to ask for a fence to be put in, for our property line. I said I'd like for a fence. Would that be doable to put in? I just don't want kids, I don't want anyone to come over.
Ma'am, that, that is something the petitioner can, can address when Mr. Hammer does his presentation.
Okay, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming out. Any others wishing to speak? That portion of public area is now closed. Mr. Hammer, would you like to?
Yes, we can put a, a fence on the, on the portion on the side.
Okay.
Just enough so that it'll block the view, but not the entire way in the, in the rear, obviously, right? So.
Fantastic. Doing the people's business right in front of us. Thank you very much, working with, working with the citizens.
They must be here. Is your, is your property right here?
Great. Fantastic. No other comments? Like to open it up to the board? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I can support this project. It's, I mean, it's serving the neighborhood, it's serving the city, it's, it's serving people that, that are in need. From a zoning perspective, it doesn't look like there is going to be much of an impact, so I, I can support this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the applicant. And madam, to, to your presentation, very thorough, very, really detailed the operation of the, of the group home. You know, on a, on a side note, Mr. Chairman, I, I also do work at a residential program, so I'm very familiar with what, what you're trying to do. I, I really think it's admirable, it's, it's, you're doing God's work, and I'm also in the social service field. I, I think, you know, something like this is needed, unfortunately. You know, it's a treatment center, and we do need treatment facilities in the city. And also, I think this is a good repurpose of a, of a nursing home. So I wish you the best of luck. So thank you, thank you for coming on this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very easy vote for me to make this evening. First and foremost, the, the services provided are desperately needed. And, and the good work of the Hart House speaks for itself. Secondly, the, the building that will house your program is, is more than conducive to the intended use. You add the two together and I think you've found yourself a perfect home here in Lowell. We, we're fortunate to, to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Thank you through, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. I think this is just as close to a no-brainer as possible because of the work that's being presented to, as far as the, from the Hope House. It's something that services are desperately, desperately needed and a non-conforming use that was previously there. We're looking at a lesser intrusive, non-conforming use, especially with the amount of people, amount of residents that are being proposed. And, you know, it's just something that's certainly needed. And as far as the variance, we're talking one parking spot, so that's not, that, that seems minimal. So I, I would be fully in support of this and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but I, I agree with my fellow board members that this, this is a great repurpose, repurposing of this building and something that is a service that is wonderful that we can provide as a community. and something that is a service that is wonderful that we can provide as a community and host you here. So I'm, I'm really happy to see you in front of us. The building itself has 45, or was, a nursing home for 45 rooms?
I, I believe it's 45 rooms in there, Mr. McCarthy.
And the plan is to do some cosmetic work and to just upgrade it, you know, finishes maybe, or paint finishes or things like that. But we, we're only using, we're, we're only gonna have 15 mothers in the facility. So could you just kind of speak to how the rest of the building gets utilized if we only have 15 rooms being utilized?
So the building is a bit bigger than we need. However, it's really hard to find a building that can house 15 women and sometimes up to 21, 23 children. And it's, you need more space than you, than it may seem because you need to think about bedrooms that can flip all the time. So if you have a nine-year-old boy and a seven-year-old girl, they're gonna need two bedrooms, plus you're gonna need a bedroom. Versus if you have a mom with a baby, you need a bigger room, you know? And we are required to have all kinds of other space. So we must have, we have to have office space for all that staff. We have to have private counseling rooms that can accommodate both individuals and families. We need to have community space. We would be using a really large, beautiful space that they have there actually already as a community dining room and some other sort of areas just for people to relax. We need an area for the daycare that we do onsite while the moms are in treatment. We'll use more of the building, but the building is bigger than we need. But we'll use more than you think.
And, and you arrived at 15 as the number that you want to be treating at the facility as a test number that you might increase down the road, or is that gonna pretty much be it, or?
We have a contract for up to 15 families with the Bureau of Substance and Addiction Services. They potentially could increase it. 15 women and their children are a lot of people to take care of. I don't know that we would really want to increase it by more than one or two ever. And we could, we can afford the building at 15.
Okay, all right. And, and thank you very much. And I think, Francesco, as, we, we wouldn't be able to condition the quantity in the special permit anyway, right? I don't think we could do that as a-
I would not recommend doing that.
Right, right, right. Okay. Very good. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
I already spoke, Mr. Chairman.
Apologies, apologies. Gotta get my cheat sheet going. I, I want to thank you wholeheartedly for coming in tonight and providing your program and the overall outline of the need, its benefits, and the long-term benefit that the city will, will gain with, with these services for, for these young women, with young children that either lived here or, or were raised here. And I'm sure with some of the programs that you spoke of, the outcomes are positive. And if they, in turn, stay in the city, that's what the community is all about. I'm appreciative of the residents coming out tonight and voicing their concerns and having the open conversation here and abling the citizens to see this process in action. And as always, the presentation is, is on point. I believe, I believe the Commonwealth has done due diligence choosing this site. And I want to thank, thank you and your crew and your team for this. It's a perfect balance of, of space from nonconforming to nonconforming. If this space wasn't being utilized and brought forward in this capacity, it could be, it could be left vacant. It could be turned into a situation, we had another section of the city with a former nursing home, that this board spent lots of time reviewing and things of that nature. But the diligence, the due diligence and the homework set forth here, I'm hopeful sets a precedent moving forward for these types of repurposes of the building. So I wholeheartedly endorse this petition. I wish you great success. Any other comments or concerns by the, any of the members of the board? None being said, may I have a motion?
Do we have, oh, no, we don't have a condition, right, Dennis?
Nope.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-57 for 259 Baldwin Street. We're doing two, two votes. For a special permit approval under Section 4.5 to allow the operation of a residential recovery home on the subject property, changing it from one nonconforming use to another less detrimental nonconforming use.
May I have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Briere. We have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Approved.
Member Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proco.
Approve.
Counselor, you've been unanimously approved.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-57 for 259 Baldwin Street for variance approval under Section 6.1.4.3H for off-street parking to allow the operation of a residential recovery home on the subject property, changing it from one nonconforming use to another less detrimental nonconforming use.
May I have a second?
A second motion, Mr. Chairman.
A roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Approved.
Member Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proco.
Approve.
Been unanimously approved.
Gentlemen, thank you very much, and I hope you have a great holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you kindly, Counselor. You as well. Happy holidays, happy New Year. Be safe. Moving forward under new business, ZBA 2021-58, the special permit, Batten Brothers, Inc., at 691 Rogers Street, Section 6.3. Batten Brothers, Inc. has applied to the zoning board of appeals on behalf of Salem Five Bank for an internally illuminated sign at 691 Rogers Street. The property is located in the regional retail zoning district, RR, and requires a special permit on 6.3 and any other relief required on the zoning ordinance. Is there a representative tonight? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jeff Serra with Batten Brothers Signs here this evening on behalf of Salem Five Bank for their branch located at 691 Rogers Street. Little background on Salem Five. They're a mutual bank founded in 1855. Been growing since, like most banks do. They've got 34 branches now, two of them are in Lowell. The one at 691, and then another one tucked off into Heard Street. In 2018, the bank merged with Sage Bank and absorbed the properties and, and all the assets of the bank. One of those assets was the freestanding sign at 691 Rogers. The board had previously approved for Sage, what year I'm not sure, an illuminated message center on the pylon sign. In the years since, the message center itself has gone defunct and no longer is operational. The bank would like to replace it. They'd like to remove the existing message center and the sign that's below the message center and get rid of those completely and put a new message center in the place of those two. It's a slight reduction in square footage overall of about five and a half square feet, so it's not much of a reduction, but it is smaller. They've just recently had a new building put up next to them. Blocks a little bit of visibility on a branch that's already set back from the street and down below the street. The bank is aware that in the zoning requirements, there's no flashing, there's no video allowed, and they've agreed that that is not something that they would be doing. I think it's fairly straightforward, so I, with that, I would just open it up to you folks for questions.
Thank you very much. That being said, I'd like to open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public area is closed. Anyone who's to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public area is now closed. Anyone others to speak? That portion of public area is now closed. Like to open up to the board. Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I don't really see too many issues with this. It's expanding on the message center part of the signage, which makes it actually, it's actually really nice design. I like it. And we have had, I know we've had similar signage in that general area and other businesses with that, with the new technology and, you know, putting, almost television-like images on, on the board, which, which is only gonna be more attractive to more customers. So I don't see any issues with this, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Van?
To you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is pretty straightforward, you know, in terms of sign and marketing and upgrades. It, it makes sense, so wish you the best of luck, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dennis.
To you, Mr. Chairman. I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. Couple weeks ago, I was in Times Square, and whole sides of buildings are message centers. It's, it's insane. The, I mean, this feels like it's just a tiny little change here. It's barely anything. I, I hope we don't get to that on Rogers Street where we see whole sides of buildings turning into that. This seems like a pretty straightforward request, and I wish you the best of luck. And I hope that the neighbor building next door, you know, doesn't have too many negative effects on your visibility. But I, I think this makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo the sentiments as well. It's fairly straightforward. I, I don't see any negative impacts to, to the other businesses there as well. So good luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I, I agree that, I think the, the upgrade and the change is, is warranted here with no adverse impact on the neighborhood. And I agree with Dennis. I certainly hope we don't duplicate Times Square on, on Rogers Street. That being said, any other comments or concerns? None being heard. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-58 for 691 Rogers Street, special permit approval under Section 6.3 to install an internally illuminated sign.
May I have a second?
A second motion?
Second by Mr. McCarthy. We have a roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin.
Approved.
Member Peck.
Approved.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proco.
Approve.
So you've been unanimously approved. Best of luck to you and your client.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays. Moving forward, ZB 2021-60 for variance, on New at 15 Clifford Street, Section 5.1, 6.1.10. On New has applied to the zoning board of appeals to construct a garage that will not meet the front yard setback and driveway that would exceed the maximum allowed floor area ratio, FAR, in the suburban neighborhood, single-family SSF zoning district. The application requires variance leave under Section 5.1 for the front yard setback, Section 6.1.10 for the curb cut, and for any other relief required on the zoning ordinance. The petition here this evening, we have receipt of continuation.
Anybody on Zoom?
We have a Zoom petition. Indoor comment?
There is someone on Zoom. You can talk if you are signed in.
Hi. Hi, my name is Ra.
Okay.
Hi.
Hey, good evening. How are you, sir? If you give us your name and address for public record and tell us a little bit about your petition tonight.
Hi, my name is Ra. I live on 15 Clifford Street. And I would like to pose for a garage built onto my house. I've been living here for over seven years now.
That's it? It'll be open to some questions, I'm sure, from the board. That being said, thank you. I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public area is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public area is now closed. Like to open up to the board. Van?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you, to the applicant. Sir, could you say a little bit about the property and why you need a garage? You're seeking a little bit of relief here in terms of the floor area ratio and... So I just want to get a little more of an understanding why, why you want a garage. Just explain it to us.
I would like to get a garage due to, just because I have infants, and it's probably better, especially in the wintertime. So it's easier to storage cars, vehicles, and sort of that nature.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that there's a typo in the description in the agenda. The applicant is seeking relief for the curb cut under 6110 and for the garage setback under 5.1, not the floor area ratio.
Oh.
Okay. Good to know.
We'll need to strike that out of the petition.
But the correct sections are cited, so it's fine in terms of public notice.
Okay.
Okay.
Fantastic.
I think that's all the comments I have right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ra, have you had a chance to look at the comments that were provided by DPD?
Yes, briefly.
Okay. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm generally in, in agreement with the, with the giving the garage to, you know, obviously, on the property, get your car in there, get it off the street, save you from possible snow, snow removal. But I do see that the, I believe DPD did make a comment about possibly considering having the, having the garage pushed further back from the street and having the curb cut narrowed. What are your thoughts on that?
It's kind of hard because I, because of my bulkhead, and I kind of want to save the backyard.
Okay.
And it's pretty much, it's just aligned with the house now instead of like pushing it back further, I guess.
Yep. Okay. Now, yeah, I, I see that now. I'm looking at the plan, and I see the bulkhead is like right, right at, next to your, the back end of the house where you're proposing to have the garage go. And that would certainly provide you with a hardship on possibly moving, moving it back because you don't want to be covering up the bulkhead, so. Okay, that makes sense. And it looks like, I think this, this will be a good addition to the property. Again, it'll get the, get your, save you from a lot of snow, snow removal. So I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, to me, this seems straightforward. And as Member Callahan says, you know, take the cars off the street, less snow removal. So I'd vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Dennis?
To you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. This garage is placed on the north side of the house, and I believe there is a driveway on the south side of the house. Is that correct?
Yes.
So instead of placing the garage where the driveway is, where you're currently parking, you're gonna continue to park where the driveway is, I imagine? And then you're gonna add more pavement in front of the garage as well as a garage?
At first, I wasn't planning to use that driveway because once I build that garage, I might do an addition onto the house. So I might get into that driveway. But as of right now, yes, I'm using that driveway.
I, I'm glad you don't seem to want to park on the street, so you have plenty of off-street parking here. But that's, that's a lot of off-street parking. I think that driveway itself that you have, it looks like it can handle at least four vehicles. And then you're looking at the garage that's another two vehicles. So you're looking to accommodate six off-street parking spaces? Is that about right?
Yes, for now.
Okay. The, the one concern I have is- The one concern I have is that you could be parking in front of the garage in a manner that would be where there's a potential for sidewalk. And so you only have 12 feet right now from your property line to the front of the garage. And if you were to use that space, it's in front of your garage to park, you're basically being beyond your property line with your vehicles. So by pushing the garage back six feet, that would give you the required parking space dimension, I think. And I think if you slid it over three feet, you'd be able to build a five-by-eight covered entry and miss your bulkhead. But we'd be able to make sure that there's no vehicles parked off your property on that potential sidewalk zone that I think the building inspector had brought up in one of his notes. I know that you kind of have your mind fixed here with the covered entry being five-by-five. But if it was five-by-eight, you could slide it over three feet. And then if you slid it back six feet, is that something you could possibly do to make sure that we don't have any issues with parking in front of the garage that would encroach on the sidewalk right away?
Right now, there's no really sidewalk on my side of the street. It's mostly just a main street. So, and I'm not planning to park anything in front of it if I'm planning to use it to get in and out. And the thing is, if I push it back, pretty much it's just going to touch the shed house that I have right there in the back, right left corner, if you looked at the house, in front of the house.
You're correct. It would get very close to the shed. And that would be a detriment, I'm sure, because you're trying to minimize that lawn area.
Yes.
Okay. I'm a little torn. I know that there's a lot of garages in that neighborhood that are close to the street.
Yes.
Even though the setback does require us in this district to have, I believe it's 30 feet. We're way under that for sure, by 12.7. But you do have plenty of parking on the other side for off-street parking, so I can't imagine you needing more. I think one other request was to make that dimension less than 30 feet for the width of that pavement. Francesca, is 25 feet allowable in this district? Or is that the, or is it less than 25? Is it 16?
It's 20 is the maximum allowed.
20 is allowed?
Mm-hmm.
So we're over the allowable by 10 feet. 50%. Can I ask why you need to have 30 feet versus 20 feet or even 25?
I think it's because the size of the garage.
The garage is 28 feet. The doors on them are probably going to be less than 28. They're probably going to be a 20-foot door or something. I don't know what your double-sized is doors. But I can't imagine the pavement aligning with the doors. It's beyond that.
I think the pavement should only align with the garage, the width of the garage. But then there's a little path walkway between the garage and the house because it's not really attached to the house. So pretty much it's like a little tunnel between the garage and to the main house.
Okay, I'm looking at the site plan that you provided for us to review here. And I don't see the sidewalk that you, are you suggesting that there's an additional paved surface that's not on the site plan that you want to provide?
I don't believe so.
Well, right now, the pavement on the proposed garage aligns, well, it's actually wider than the proposed garage. But there's no additional sidewalk being added that goes between the house and the garage on your proposed site plan.
Unless...
Well, just to keep going here, I think I'd be interested in seeing us at least maintain the width of the garage with the pavement and not go over that. 28 feet seems like it's more than generous for us to look at versus 30 feet, if you'd be amenable to that.
That's fine. I mean, if the width of the garage is 28 and we can just make it 28, I'm fine with that.
All right. Very good. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you eliminating the swimming pool?
Yes.
So the swimming pool's coming. You're trading in the swimming pool for a two-car garage?
Yes.
Well, if you think that's a good trade, it's okay with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sir, you've gone from 30 to 28. Any other concerns, comments, conditions? None being heard? That being said, may I have a motion, please?
To you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-60 for 15 Clifford Street for variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum front yard setback and maximum floor area ratio, and section 6.1.10 for curb cut to construct a garage on the subject property with the condition that the curb cut reduction, curb cut be reduced to 28 feet as opposed to 30.
I think you may have a second.
A second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Vice Chair. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve a condition.
Member Peck.
Approve a condition.
Member Callahan.
Approve a condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve a condition.
Member Briere.
Approved with conditions.
Member Proko.
Approve a condition.
So you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck with your garage.
Thank you. And happy holiday, guys.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
As previously discussed, I'd like to go back to continued business. EBA 2021-34 for a variance by Julio Cortez at 242 Lakeview Avenue, section 5.1, section 5.3. As petitioner has not shown, has there been anybody on Zoom, indoor call-in? None being heard. What is the protocol of the board, Fran, for no-show petition?
What was that?
What was that, sorry?
So the petitioner's not here, we're not on Zoom, and we're not calling with no notice of continuance. How do we move forward?
The board may choose to continue the matter. I don't believe that the applicant needs to request a continuance. I think the board can just grant a continuance if they wish. They can also deny the petition if they would like to.
That being said, I'd like to...
Courses of action.
All right. I'd like to open up to the board for any comments. I do believe this would be continuance number four.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this would be, I think, I think three, if not four. So I'm ready to vote if my colleagues are, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns?
I think that this was on the original agenda back in September. I think September 27th, it was on the agenda. And I think we've been continuing it since September 27th. There was some confusion. I went by the site earlier this week and there was no notice on the building for this coming before the board. So without that signage, we don't meet the criteria for notifying the neighbors to have the petition heard, I believe. So I don't know if we can hear it without meeting that criteria.
You're correct.
Okay.
So a vote on the continuance is going to take matter of course and an over, a vote, correct?
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
So a continuance due to the lack of signposting and internal communications, we should do a matter of continuance?
Yes, you may do that. Yep.
I have a, what about another? I know this has been several continuances before and I understand that, you know, there's no one here. Fran, is it possible we can just consider in the fact that no one, no one's appeared? On behalf of the petition, we can consider this application as withdrawn and probably do so without prejudice. I just don't want to see us put a continuance on, I don't know if members of the public, if this affects members of the public in their notice protocol. I believe that we did have a gentleman here who was earlier, who was mentioning it. So I don't know. I'm trying to think of other options. This is unusual. We never, in all my years on the board, I haven't seen anybody not appear to prosecute their, I can't say use the word prosecute, but go forward with their petition or not even contact the board or contact DPD as to why they're not here. So.
Right. I'm not sure that, I believe that they have to request to withdraw their application without prejudice and you can't impose that onto an applicant. That's my understanding of it. So I would avoid doing that.
Yeah, okay. Just trying to think other options for the board, so.
As a suggestion, could we continue it indefinitely without a date and just leave it out there? And wait for the petitioner to...
You do need a date certain. But you could push it out quite far if that's what you'd like to do. But it does need to be a date certain because this is the notice, if an abutter is watching on television, for example,
Okay.
of the date that they can expect it, to see it again before the board.
This seems to be a lack of interest in moving this forward since September 27th. This is quite unusual for us.
Yeah, if I may, I agree with, I agree with both sides. But there's no communication for a continuance. We're on a third hearing. Abutters are present. Abutters are perhaps participating in television. I just, I just think it's unheard of that you wouldn't, you'd have a petition of this matter in front of us and then have total disregard for the process. I didn't see any email communications requesting anything. And it is now towards the end of the meeting. And we did make public notice at the beginning of the meeting to table this till the end. So I'm willing, I'm willing to move forward on a vote.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman. We certainly, we can move forward on a vote on this, whether the petitioner's here or not. Not going to help us in our decision-making, obviously, but I, if, I'm thinking if what, I wouldn't want to, again, for the purposes of the public notice, I don't think a continuance is warranted, especially when the petitioner hasn't participated. If we can't consider a withdrawal, can't consider it withdrawn, or can't take any action, I think another option would be to go forward and consider the petition based on what we have before us and noting that the petitioner's not present.
Yeah, and just referencing the posting of the sign, I've not seen the sign at all. So...
That's my biggest, I don't know how we can go forward with hearing this without the public being notified. And part of that is this visible signage being posted. So I don't think we can hear it tonight.
Notices go out to the abutters, US Mail, and posted in the articles of the Wall Sun?
I'm not sure. The legal ad has been run, but I'm not sure about the postings. This wasn't, not my project. I don't have that information here right now. But the sign isn't there, so even if the other two things were completed, the sign is also required. So it does not meet public notice requirements right now.
So therefore, if we move forward with a vote, we're in violation of the zoning Board of Appeals for public notice because none has taken place. So it would be, it would be a vote in absence.
Okay, I see.
Because we are, we are violating our, if we make, if we move forward with a vote.
Right.
Because there is clearly lack of communication, lack of interest or concern, in my opinion, at this point.
We can look into...
We're placing ourselves in jeopardy as a board.
Okay.
Whereas the petitioner, who has skin in the game, chose not to do this. Whether it's, I'm hopeful there's no underlying emergency circumstances with this resident. That would be disconcerting. But in all fairness to the process, I mean, here we are. I see several gentlemen here who have been extremely patient, in my opinion, waiting, I believe, to speak on behalf of this position. Either, either way, I have no, no notice or concern. But I don't want to be placed in a position where we're adversarial. We're voting against ourselves in all honesty, gentlemen. So. Is upsetting it is, we're kind of forcing our hand to have another continuance. I will say for a matter of record, if moving to a continuance is where we go, strike three. This will be the last continuance and we do move to a vote.
If I may, I will check in with law or with, and/or with Eric, who's a lawyer, to understand what our possible next steps could be if we can't get a hold of this applicant.
So what would our vote be at this point?
I would recommend continuing it a few meetings to give us the opportunity to reach out more aggressively to the homeowner.
Okay. Okay. This is a wish of the board. Any comments or concerns?
I guess one other question, Fran, since there's been no posting. Could we consider this as an incomplete application? Or because of public notice already was issued and the abutters were notified, we can't? I mean, if we can consider it an incomplete application and not address it, and then the petitioner's going to have to go back to the drawing board. He's out his money paid.
Right.
And he'll have to reapply, renotice, and I'm, I'm just, again, trying to...
That's a possibility, and I can look into that also.
Yeah.
I'll make a note.
Sean, I think that the, I remember back in September seeing signage there, but that was September. So.
Okay, so there were signs there at some point.
But that's not working for tonight. If the public hasn't been notified that there's a, so it may have been, and Lakeview Avenue's a busy street, and it may have been removed somehow. So I don't know for sure. But I do, I think, I didn't see anything.
Never been assigned.
You've never seen a sign?
No, we got one notice.
It's, so the public hearing, I understand and I appreciate.
This is the fourth time.
So I understand the public, I understand your frustrations and I'm trying to eloquently respect that. But we have, we're not opening up the public hearing. And again, I agree 100%. This is, this is unprecedented in my lengthy career on the board that a petitioner does not show. The total disregard and lack of our process is not sitting well, particularly with me and obviously the citizens. I mean, I apologize on behalf of someone I don't even know for his disrespect and disregard to the process. And, you know, you have your right as a citizen to be publicly heard. But we're in a very thin line here on precedent-setting issues as how we relate with this issue. I guess, sir, I'm not, I cannot entertain open conversation because it does not allow me to, the public hearing is not open. Obviously, I think in hindsight, as I look to the audience who spent this amount of time here, I guess the right thing would be to do is to give due diligence to the process as well as to the petitioners, as well as to the citizens who are clearly frustrated. Any other comments by the board? Any one other?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question. Seeing that...
Seeing that this person has, we've continued this so many times and this petitioner appears to have disregard for our process, is there any recourse that the board can do? I mean, I'm assuming that maybe they're still doing construction while they're trying to get, you know, these modifications, is there anything that the, from a city perspective that can be done on, that could sort of enforce this process to be had to by a petitioner?
I think the answer to your question would be to set it for the next scheduled meeting and require the petitioner to maintain public notice with the sign and we can get a confirmation that the abutters list one out. My concern frankly is if we move forward a vote, we're going to put ourselves in an adverse position, creating a precedent for items that it should be public notice and that we're voting on. I think the recourse is the vote, quite frankly, in, in big boy world. There's a lot, there's a lot to swallow here, there's a lot to, to, to think about, but I think the role of the board is to look to the zoning bylaws and apply them to this particular petition, to both points by the clerk and Member McCarthy, it becomes an incomplete package, then it becomes a failure to make public notice, so our hands are tied, not in a good way, by this total disregard, but in a way that could put us in another adverse position because now if people decide they just don't want their petition to be heard, they don't want to withdraw, they can just not show. And then if we don't have a reconcili, reconciliatory process to identify that, maybe we need to clarify that with legal as well. Seems as though we're keeping them quite busy as of late. That's my, that would be my thoughts. Mr. Vice Chairman, any thoughts on?
Mr. Chairman, through you, Ms. Aigliani, if we contain this matter to, to meetings out or two meetings out, would it be, could you look into, see if we can vote on the matter, whether the petitioner is here or not, just, just so we get some clarity?
Yes, I'll be looking into what the, what your options will be at that time if the petitioner is not present. I'm just, I don't know off the top of my head, so I want to make sure so that we're fully prepared at that meeting. But we'll make every effort to reach out to the property owner and be more aggressive. Have they not attended any meetings so far? Okay.
No, no, there's been, no. So again, the, you know, the lack of participation, concern, regard is, is all relevant and it's blatantly in our faces right now. However, it, it, it's going to put us in, it's going to put us in a legal bind if we, because it could hold harm, other petitioners in the future if we move forward with a vote, in my opinion. We'll certainly, we're a board as a whole and we have, we have the obligation to the, to the process, to the zoning laws and to the citizens, so. Any concerns or comments, Mr. Clerk, personally, professionally, I mean?
No, I mean, if this was a court of law, Mr. Chairman, I mean, one side doesn't show up, the other side does, it's either default or dismissal and this isn't a situation, we're not in a court of law, we don't, and to George's point, is there any repercussions? Unfortunately, we don't have subpoena power, we can't subpoena the petitioner to come in, mostly it's, no, the petition, it's petition is petition, if, like I said, if this is a court of law, that the court would treat it as, well, I guess he doesn't want to proceed, but in this instance, we don't, we don't have clarity, this isn't a court of law, this is an appeals board, we don't have that clarity, so, we don't have clarity of what we can do as far as whether to proceed, whether to consider it withdrawn, whether to take no action, that we don't have, I mean, I guess, I would, I would think, it's very, very, very unfortunate, try to spitball as much as possible to see if there's any other options, but I think the only option at this point is one more continuance, vigorously reaching out to the petitioner to see what his intentions are and, you know, in the instance, maybe try to see if legal or, legal or Mr. Slagle can provide some guidance as to if this situation ever happens in the future, what are our options, because again, like you said, this is unprecedented, never seen this at all in my entirety on the board, so that's, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Fran?
Yep, so what I'll do is I'll check in with law and Chapter 40A and my supervisor and come up with a list of, in the event that the applicant doesn't appear at the next scheduled hearing, the different courses of action you can take, I'll communicate that to you all by email. Hopefully they do show up, but if they don't, then you will be prepared at that meeting.
I would hopefully, and I appreciate your candor and your input and advice, I would certainly hope at this point the petitioner is prepared. There's been more than enough time to be prepared for this petition. The unfortunate situation now arises, we have to do two meetings out for notice, am I correct? Because of the requirement for the, for the, for the sign. So our next meeting would be, our second to next meeting would be?
So the next meeting is January 10th and then the meeting after that is the 24th.
So it would have to be the 24th. Now, in the meantime, if the notice is going to be sent for public notice to be posted during that time from notice for posting to the next meeting, if there is no other posting, could you also ask the legal what, if that, if the posting is then disregarded, could you ask legal what our recourse is at next meeting? So essentially, if we require the posting, the posting doesn't take place between now and January 24th, I would like to know from legal, what is our recourse?
Yes.
From even having that on.
Yes.
Because at that point, I would think it would be a dismissal.
Okay.
And then notice should be publicly made as well, to avoid the situation that has been presented to us tonight by this non-performing petitioner with having the citizens here at this hour, not able to speak their, their, their public voice, which is extremely frustrating to me, but the process, and I apologize wholeheartedly, gentlemen, we don't want to negate the hearing itself coming out of procedural operations for, for the zoning board. It's, it's, I've been on board 13, 14 years, I've never seen this. I apologize on behalf of the board, I'm sure my colleagues feel as disheartened I am, I know DPD does, but I think that's, that's our best option. Any other comments or concerns? Move to a motion for a continuance in ZB 2021-34.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can I recommend, and maybe Fran, can we, can we as a board state no further continuances?
Sorry?
Can we, can we make a declaration of no further, after this continuance, no further continuances? Do you think? I don't know, is that?
I don't really think so, but you can
Okay.
Decide at the next meeting to not continue.
All right, I was just trying to, and again, thinking, thinking of like instances in, in the court of law, when a case gets continued several times for one reason or another, a court, there's a lot of times where the court will say no further continuances and that it has to go forward on the, on whatever the date is, so, but we'll, I'll put that aside for now, so.
Just one final point, may I suggest to Mr. Cortez and anyone that may be participating and viewing this, if you know of or see of, please convey to him his requirement to touch base with DPD to resolve this matter.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-34 for 242 Lakeview Ave to continue the public hearing in this matter to January 24th, 2022.
I have a second.
Second motion?
I have a roll call.
Chair and Perrin.
Approved condition.
Member Peck.
Approved continuance.
Member Callahan.
Approved continuance to January 24th, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Approved continuance to January 24th, 2022.
Member Brier.
Approved continuance.
Member Proko.
Approved continuance, January 24th, 2022.
We're going to move forward under other business, that that matter has been continued to January 24th, this will be part of the public notice as well as the posting requirements and abutters notice. We'll move forward under other business, 7476 Bolio Street for a minor minification, the application, applicant is seeking the renewal, the removal of a condition placed on the property, special permit for use, in the, 2004, the special permit allowed the property to be used as a three-family building if it remained ownership occupied, the applicant recently purchased the building and is requesting that this condition is waived. Fran? Counselor? Good evening. Counselor, if you will, thank you for your, for your attendance, we try to, we'll try to make this as.
I, I spent 20 years on the planning board in Tewksbury, so I know exactly what you're doing, so.
Thank you for your service.
We had some long nights.
I would imagine.
Long nights on, on that board also, so I appreciate and I understand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicant, Daniel Di Camago, we were here in, on November 8th and we presented the case at that time, and basically, just in a nutshell, this was a situation where a special permit was granted by the boards approximately 17 years ago. Given the formal approval of the continued use of the premises as a three-family building, which they traced back at that time to at least approximately 50 years ago, so it's been used as a three-family building for a significant period of time, it continues that it's a three-family building, one of the conditions in the special permit was the limitation of a, the owner of the property had to occupy the premises, and at the time of our presentation approximately a month ago, our position was that, you know, that that particular condition was not something that was really enforceable, but was causing significant problems for the owner, and at, at this time, there's still, you know, because, you know, he's not going to disrespect what was put on record, there's still one unit that is vacant because, you know, I suppose technically he could move in there and everything's fine, but the language doesn't say that he can move in there, you know, I mean, that he could allow someone else to move in there. We did get, I did get an email directly from, you know, the solicitor's office, which was the reason for the continuance back on November 8th, November 8th, to get some feedback, you know, from the solicitor's office, and, and they did specifically identify, identify the same thing, that zoning is for use, not for a particular person, and, you know, as we stayed last time, you know, a tenant is just as much a member of the community or resident of the city as somebody that owns the property, so, you know, everyone that lives in the community is a, you know, is a citizen and a member, you know, of the community, so it appears, you know, from the letter or the email that we, I received or the letter dated December 3rd, that the assistant city solicitor said that would recommend that the board grant the applicant's request or remove the requirement, making specific reference to case law that stated that, you know, zoning is zoning which pertains to use, it doesn't pertain to the person, and so I, truthfully, I thought we were all set, I, I did get a phone call late this afternoon from, you know, Mr. Slagle, and in, in truth, I'm not sure exactly, I defer to DPD in terms of, you know, what the status is, you know, is, but at this point, we received the letter from the solicitor's office, I thought that that was the answer that we were looking for and that the answer was, yeah, a condition pertaining to who's going to live there, doesn't pertain to zoning, and, and that was it, and therefore, you know, what we came before the board and the format that we came before the board, you know, I thought was, you know, clear that it was primed to have a determination by the board on that issue, but, you know, that, so that's where we stand at this time and I, I would look for any further information.
Okay, thank you. So Fran?
I was just going to note that we do have a registered speaker for this, Sandy McNamara, who is online.
Yeah, so as it relates to that, we did, I did receive communication today and had conversation that if a registered speaker registers, they are allowed to speak at a non-public hearing. That was another, one of the issues that we looked into and I had follow-up conversations today, Mr. Clerk, in regards to that, and we are allowed to allow citizens that are registered speakers to speak on behalf of these. So is it a Zoom call, is it a phone call?
She is on Zoom.
Okay.
I just requested to unmute.
So we're allowed the registered speaker to speak and then we will move forward with the discussion with legal and the opine on that decision.
It looks like we can't hear her.
Thank you, if we could stand by, we have technical difficulties with the registered speaker to attain public access.
So we can't hear her.
Okay.
I will message her and have her call in because I know that she really wanted to speak.
Yeah, and with, with what I, was, the information I was provided today as to the registered speaker, we, we need to make every avenue. Yes, why don't we, can we pause this for one second, two minutes, and we'll move on to the next administrative review until we get, thank you, thank you, Counselor, I appreciate your cooperation.
No problem.
We'll move under other business at 610 Gorham Street for an administrative review, the application is before the board to satisfy a condition of approval for park invariance with 610 Gorham Street, granted on February 2nd, 2021. The board conditioned that there be a six-month administrative review to evaluate the success of reduced parking to four off-street parking spaces, the building has not yet received occupancy, so anyone here to speak on behalf of this administrative review?
Sorry, I was
It's okay.
Could you repeat that?
Is there anybody here to speak on Gorham Street?
Yes, I can speak to that, I, basically, there was an administrative review regarding the parking at the I basically, there was an administrative review regarding the parking at this particular site on Gorham Street. So remember, it was almost like a corner store type of a building that was being redeveloped. But right now, there are three building permits that are open. The building is still under construction and it's not occupied yet, so we don't feel like it is the appropriate time to do an administrative review of the parking. So we recommend conducting the administrative review six months after the building is occupied, which we believe was the intent of the board when they set that condition of approval. So, yeah.
So if we could have a date for the motion? We're looking at six months from occupancy, so we don't.
So we don't know when that's going to be.
So it's a date to be determined?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, we have a motion for unspecified date to be determined after six months upon occupancy. For a second administrative review.
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make them, oh, Dennis.
Sorry, any comments or concerns of the board?
If I could, I raised this as a concern only because I noticed that the skin of the building was done and they were working on the inside. So I just wanted to see where we would stand with that six-month review. This was just an informational piece that I just wanted to understand if they were getting ready for occupancy and then we could potentially look at six months out. So we're probably looking at occupancy in April, maybe March, April, I'm guessing. So I don't think we need to act on this because that was our intent of the original condition, to wait for occupancy to happen and then we would be alerted to maybe a agenda item down the road six months later in, you know, August, September, that we would have the administrative review. So that this was something I only brought it up because I noticed the building was nearly complete. And I just wanted to make sure that we were kind of on top of it for our review. But I don't think we need to act until we have a occupancy date. And then we can say we'll have a six-month review and six months later. That's my that's my take on it.
Oh, I I agree. I think it was just we we move it to an agenda item upon occupancy. Therefore, no voters needed, nor motion.
Agreed.
Very well. This will be tabled under administrative review upon occupancy to six months to the point. As the registered speaker?
We still can't hear her.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
It's okay. So we will need to move forward with, we've made the attempts at this point for registered speaker. So in regards to the minor modification, Fran, would you wish to speak to? To that point now?
Basically, my understanding is that the special permit in the use, the special permits granting the the three-family status is tied to that condition. And that I believe the city solicitor told Eric that when you remove that special condition from the special permit, the status as a three-family goes away. That isn't my opinion or Eric's opinion. That was coming from the city solicitor. And we're expecting additional correspondence from them to put that in writing. But that was what I heard today. And that's what I believe was communicated to Mr. Plunkett.
Yeah, and to follow up, the same communication I had. So the actual front end, the back end of the petition will become null and void and would become a reapplication. Is how we're being told through legal.
Well, again, I can't comment without any reference. The reference that we have is that, you know, a special permit is to unzone and is to use.
Correct.
I I'd love to see if they have a case that says that, you know, a a grant of a special permit with conditions, if one of the conditions is found to be in excess of the power that was granted, that then after 50 years of this use, they're saying that, oh, it's no longer three family, something that's been used for 30 years.
Yeah.
I mean, 50 years, 50 years.
Illegally.
It just just seems hard to.
I wish we would not have.
Illegally.
Yeah, so I think what we need to do at this point, Counselor, is do we need to get the final opinion of legal? Because as of meeting time today, there was just some back and forth conversations. We don't have that final legality in writing to satisfy your needs of what case law they may be referring to for what they're referring to. So I respectfully will request that we continue this.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Paca.
I guess I'm uncertain as to why we cannot proceed with this this evening. Has something transpired that all members of the board are not aware of? I I simply refer to the legal opinion that we requested dated December 3rd. And I'm not an attorney, but I guess I'm playing one on television tonight. It seems very clear to me that this condition should have never have been imposed. That we are also being told that if it is the request of the petitioner to have it removed, then we should in fact do that. And there is no such evidence that that serves any lawful purpose for this to have ever been placed in to begin with. So what what do we need further than the opinion that was rendered on December 3rd? What what's going on behind the scenes that we're not aware of?
Well, I don't believe anything's going on behind.
No, I'm not I'm not suggesting there's anything nefarious going on.
No, no, what I'm saying is, is that my my conversation today is that they were not going to have a final legal representation by by meeting day, meeting time today. I understand there's a communication. I'm just I'm just following up on the communications I had with DPD.
Well, I would just like to add for the record, reading directly from the memorandum dated December 3rd at the behest of this committee, we requested a legal opinion because in fact, we thought that that was what was before us initially. And I had agreed with the petitioner's counsel that evening. And this clearly states that the limitation on the special permit that requires the owner to occupy the property is not an appropriate exercise of the board's authority. And we would recommend that the board grant the applicant's request to remove that requirement from the special permit for 7476 Bolio Street. This type of condition is highly disfavored and beyond the scope of the board's power. I'm prepared to 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 remove it now. And I I just don't understand why we're not doing it.
Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I I agree with Member Brier. I don't see any reason why we can't vote on this right now. What's being asked of us is to remove a condition on a granting of a special permit several years ago that never should have been conditioned in the first place. That's clear from legal. That was my gut feeling back when we heard this a month ago, a month and a half ago. Mr. Chairman, you elaborated on it on a lot of it last week, last month, how such a restrictive condition just seemed extremely inappropriate. And I I understand that there's been some last-minute comments from legal and other members of the other members of the city about the ramifications of removing the condition. At this point right now, I'm feeling we we really shouldn't be keeping a condition on there that was not appropriate to begin with. And then let just unfortunately, Attorney Plunkett, you and your client, just got to work it out with work it out with legal and see where see where we go from here. Whether it means coming back before us again with, you know, filing before notice, I I don't know. Or I I certainly would understand what your client's position is going to be. And I would certainly vigorously probably, as a lawyer, I probably would vigorously, you know, defend that. But my my opinion is we proceed accordingly. It's clear from the memo from legal and it's clear from common sense, I believe, that this restriction, this condition never should have been put on in the first place. And then from there, just let let everything else work itself out between, Attorney Plunkett's client and the city and let, you know, if it comes back before us, so be it on under under that. So then then we'll deal with it then. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Sean. No, my my point was, I wasn't making a comment of of moving or not moving with a vote. My comment was I I did not receive this memorandum for the start of the meeting. I had phone con, I had conversations. The legal opinion that came down, I haven't read it. So that's my comment. I had conversations that gave me a background of what may or may not come in writing by the start of the meeting. I, as an individual member, haven't had an opportunity to read it. That's my position. So I'll take a moment to read it. I don't tend to read while I drive on 128. As it as it relates to the conversations, they they were very clear that this would re, you know, should be removed and should land back in a a reapplication process.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, by all means, Mr. McCarthy.
I I believe the question the board should be getting clarification on from legal is, if we strike a condition from a decision that was made by the board to support a three-family petition with conditions, does the whole decision get struck and become null and void? I believe that's what my understanding is. You cannot just strike part of the decision. You have to strike the whole decision. It's all tied together. So you can't untangle the condition from the decision.
I think that's what happened. The 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 memo was sent to us by law and then another staff person in law added that comment similar to what you were just saying, that they are tied together and that it becomes null and void and that it would then require a refiling if the applicant was to pursue a three-family with no, like, owner occupancy stipulation. So that is my understanding of this.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we do continue it, I would love to see a document from legal stating that clearly and why that justification exists in case law or whatever it is.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, for the record, you know, clarify again, we're looking for a modification. And if a modification states that the permit as granted is hereby modified to remove the condition that the owner must occupy the premises, I don't, I just can't envision how legally they could say a modification by the permit granting authority. The ZBA is the permit granting authority here. ZBA is the one that granted this 17-some-odd years ago. And again, I don't know, I I think I heard someone's, I don't know if it was the person commenting online, you know, illegal, illegal, or something like that. But this is a property that's been a three-family for 50-plus years. You know, 50-plus years and nothing's changing, you know, nothing's changing other than the identity of the person who's occupying the premises. So if if someone wants to say that that's illegal to say that, you know, we're going to tell you who has to occupy that premise, you know, that that's that's a whole different kettle of fish of what we've been talking about.
It opens up, it opens up a legality that I don't think we're anticipating. And to Dennis's point, if we don't ask a secondary question, then it kind of forces our hand again to void the entire petition. So it puts you at an even more adverse position.
Obviously, the intent isn't to to say, oh, let's void the whole permit, which is, you know, that's not a modification.
No, no.
That would be a petition by somebody to void.
To void, no.
A a decision. And, you know, like I say, when I received the decision on December 3rd, I was saying, oh, okay, good. That's what I had expected and that should resolve all issues. And it was 5:30 this afternoon. And I'm still not even sure what the nature of the change between December 3rd and 5:30 this afternoon.
Right.
What what happened in that period of time? But.
So it would be fair to say there is still some ambiguity on the conversations that are that are being held. I mean, I I certainly, my position is clear. I think the I think the bind that the board put on this condition is 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 an overreach. I I agree with that 100%. My concern is, is if we make, and we can move forward with a vote, but if that vote binds and adversely affects the entire decision, I think that puts you at a more adverse place without having your opportunity, without you having your opportunity to have that open conversation legally with law.
An issue that no one, no one ever wants.
Yeah.
To be a litigant.
Right.
Or for something that shouldn't be litigated. But I know your next meeting date is January 10th, but I'm I'm scheduled.
I'm 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 just going through the prior ruling where the zoning board made specific findings of fact that, you know, is to maintain it as a three-family. A little enforcement of the bylaw would be substantial hardship to the owner. And that petitioner has presented evidence that the property has been assessed as a three-family dwelling since 1972. Use of a three-family is permitted in this zoning district, which was previous to the, which the zoning district ran. And use has been maintained as such as 1972. There'll be no substantial derogation for the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The board finds sufficient evidence to be presented to allow the use of a three-family to continue, to continue, meaning it it had been. There will be no detriment to the neighborhood as there will be no proposed changes to the property. Board grants the special permit with conditions as noted, not subject to conditions as noted. It's with. I think that's, I think that's telling. Personally, down the, and when they voted down the line, they say approval for special permit is granted with condition that the property remain owner-occupied. And if the property is to change ownership, this information must be disclosed. This approval is subject to revocation and the present owner will be recalled to appear before this board if necessary. So they projected that this would this would occur. Again, I don't know what this last-minute thing is from the legal department or other members of the city. Sounds to me like the board back in 2004 had an idea that this would happen, which is why they put in onto their ruling that this is subject to revocation. I mean, that I presume that revocation meant the condition that they placed on it, that it be owner-occupied. Because there's no, I can't see any other reason why. So to your point, Attorney Plunkett, yeah, I mean, it's been a three-family. I don't know what this last-minute from the city is that if we remove the condition, that all of a sudden it goes back to square one and you have to reapply. Looks like this was already projected previously back in 2004 based on what I'm seeing on the ruling. They gave that specific out that it could be. It said this could be revocated. I don't know what else they mean by revocated other than the condition. So I can't imagine they would they would grant the petition in 2004 with the condition and say, oh, we have a right to, if you sell it, we have a right to revocate the special, the special petition, the special permit. Makes absolutely no sense. So I think we can go forward on the vote on this. I think we, too, the the law department has made it very clear about this condition. It should not be, it 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 should not, it should not be there. I think we go forward, at least remove the condition and then it's up to the city. In my opinion, Attorney Plunkett, I think if we remove the condition, the permit, the special permit stands and let the city deal with it. Let the law department deal with it. Let whoever else, DPD or whoever else, deal with it. That's my opinion, based on, based on what was previously found in the granting of the special permit. on, based on what was previously found in the granting of the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean. Any other comments, concerns?
I guess as a fallback, if we do remove the condition and the law department decides that it is all tied together, it falls apart anyway. So, one way or the other, we don't have to wait. You're right, we could just remove the condition tonight, but if it all falls apart because of legal requirement for it to be tied to the decision, that's just the way it goes. But the law department needs to just clarify this one way or the other, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Fran?
Mr. Chairman, through you, you know, I do believe that, and also I'm not a lawyer or anything, but the memo we received dated December 3rd was, to me, pretty straightforward in terms of, you know, the zoning board, you know, our role and our scope and what we, we can put conditions on. And this seems to be essentially out of our scope. You know, I think there's been a lot of great points made by Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Callahan and Mr. Brier, you know, in terms of, you know, if you go through with this, waiving the condition that the vote, the approval as a whole, it's also lapses. You know, I think, you know, I'm fine with going with a vote tonight in terms of going forward with the information that I've been given so far. I think the only, the only downside that I see is, you know, I know we have, we have people rights to speak. Unfortunately, there's some technical issues or whatever, but, you know, aside from that, you know, I think it's pretty straightforward of what it's, you know, the legal, the law department's opinion and what we can, if we can vote or not. So I'm ready to vote personally. So that's just my thought on it. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fran, is the public still not able to speak? Do we know? Because we did hear some echoes, so I wasn't sure.
I don't believe that...
Okay.
We can, we can get to her.
No, that's okay. Yeah, I would have to agree. I mean, I think from, from day one, I think it was to put that kind of restriction. It probably made sense whoever was putting those, implementing that requirement at the time. But the fact that Sean just read that it is subject to revocation does say that they were anticipating, you know, that this would be challenged somewhere in the future if the house is being sold. But to that end, I don't see, from a zoning perspective, you know, what choice we have. If, if the legal department has made this distinction that it was an overreach, I think it needs to be corrected. But I, I struggle to understand what the, what the, the public, you know, what are they against, is the fact that if you need to, you know, the person has the right, the person has to be an occupant, you know, of that particular property. I can't say that if the rest of the neighborhood has the same requirements, or is it just this house? And if it's just this house, then that does say that it probably wasn't the right thing to do at that time when it was implemented. So I would, just based on what the law states, I would vote in favor of removing it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I believe, that being said, I think we should have brought us to vote. Any other comments or concerns? With that being said, may I have a motion?
I get the ZB number here, just so we're clear.
I have one, one question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brier, please.
At the previous meeting, the resident who stated concerns, who I believe was trying to get through via Zoom, was Sandra McNamara.
Okay.
And she provided us a petition signed by several residents. Has that been entered into the record?
I believe it was last, last meeting.
So we do have her objections and that of the other residents that we, that have already been entered into the record?
Right. We received those prior to the first.
Right.
Prior to that last meeting.
It's not as though their concerns are being unheard. They have been recognized and they were provided to us for, to review.
Yes.
Correct.
I just wanted to ask one further question. The home is being utilized as a three-family, correct?
The home had been, has been utilized as a three-family for close to 50 years.
Okay, then...
It is still a three-family. The, Mr., the petitioner, Mr. DiComago, has not rented out this third unit until we got this straightened out to the city. So then, the only gap in use is only because since he bought it, he's rented two of the three units, but not the third unit.
Right. I, thank you. I clearly stated my objections to some of the concerns that the residents had. I thought they were rather ambiguous and they clearly state in their petition, if you will, that the undersigned neighbors ask you, being this board, to please maintain the building as a three-family owner-occupied building. And if that can't be accomplished, return it to a two-family. While the modification that was asked for was for the, for the three-family. So, I mean, the intention of Sandra and the residents who are, is clearly noted. We're all, I've been, kept the breast of it. And I just would like, in the event that Ms. McNamara or any other residents are watching this evening, we're fully aware of their concerns. But this is simply another matter. This is, this is a legal matter, and that was indicated that night. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And just to your point, Mr. Brier, that was submitted prior to the last meeting as public record. Yes, it was issued that evening. It was submitted. So, and to your point, that essentially is a confirmation of their opinion to oppose.
Mr. Chairman, just to make certain that, you know, work, the work that's been done there is improvements, upgrades, not to change the use, but, you know, he's put on the roof, changed decks, exterior, you know, he's doing, doing it all over. And, you know, and it should be, you know, it's something that I would think the neighborhood would like to see, the building that's been utilized as a three-family for the last 50-plus years or, you know, being upgraded.
It's three meters there, correct?
Pardon me?
Three meters?
Three meters? Yes, yes.
Okay. I saw them. I just wanted to clarify on the record. Yeah.
And, you know, parking for, you know, off-street for units and, you know.
I get it. I understand. Thank you, sir, counsel. Thank you kindly. With that being said, can we have a motion?
Just for clarity purposes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to base it on the zoning board's finding of revocation. So with the motion, it's going to be deemed revoked, the modification, just so, just to make sure we're clear. So with that, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2004-0082 for 7476 Bolio Street to deem the request for a minor modification, to be mine, for, to revoke the condition that the property remain owner-occupied and to accept the minor modification.
May I have a second?
Revocation.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brier. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve minor modification.
Member Peck.
Approve minor modification.
Member Callahan.
Accept minor modification and approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve minor modification.
Member Brier.
Approve modification.
Member Proco.
Approve minor modification. And, yeah, counsel, thank you. We appreciate your patience and understanding, and I'm sure there'll be future conversations with legal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for your patience this evening. Moving forward under other business for election of offices, we have our annual election of offices. We will begin with the clerk. I seek a nomination for Sean Callahan for clerk of zoning board of appeals. May I have a second?
I'd like to second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve vote for Mr. Callahan for clerk.
Member Peck.
Approve vote for Mr. Callahan as clerk.
Member Callahan.
Approve vote for Sean Callahan for clerk.
Member McCarthy.
Approve Sean Callahan for clerk.
Member Brier.
I cast my vote for Sean Callahan.
Member Proco.
Approve Sean Callahan for clerk.
Congratulations, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate it.
Like to make a nomination for Mr. Van Peck for vice chairman of Lowell zoning board of appeals. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve and accept Mr. Van Peck, vice chairman of Lowell zoning board of appeals.
Member Peck.
Approve Van Peck as vice chairman.
Member Callahan.
Approve Van Peck. Approve Van Peck for vice chairman.
Member McCarthy.
Approve Van Peck for vice chair.
Member Brier.
I cast my vote for Van Peck.
Member Proco.
Approve Van Peck for vice chairman. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I would like to nominate Gary Perrin for chairman of the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
May I have a vote?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve and accept Gary Perrin, chairman of Lowell zoning board of appeals.
Member Peck.
Approve Mr. Perrin as chairman of the zoning board.
Member Callahan.
Approve Gary Perrin as chairman of the zoning board of appeals.
Member McCarthy.
Approve Gary Perrin as chairman of the zoning board of appeals.
Member Brier.
I cast my vote for Gary Perrin, chairperson.
Member Proco.
Approve Gary Perrin for chairman of zoning board of appeals.
The election of offices for 2022 have been nominated and approved. And thank everybody for their continued dedication to the City of Lowell, the board with DPD. Like to move forward to the other business for minutes for approval for November 22nd, 2021. Anybody have any edits, revisions, cause, deletions, concerns? None being heard. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to approve the minutes for November 22nd, 2021.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve and accept minutes 11:22, 2021.
Member Peck.
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approve minutes for November 22nd, 2021.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes for November 22nd, 2021.
Member Brier.
Approve minutes.
Member Proco.
Approve minutes for November 22nd, 2021.
Minutes have been approved. Any members have any comments or concerns on other business?
One thing on the minutes, Fran, I just want to make sure that the minutes are being posted timely on the, on the website. I think my last review, past few months of minutes haven't been put up on the website when they're, after they're approved. I don't know if that's something you can...
Okay.
Just look into.
Okay.
Just good, good for the public and it's good, you know, for us to, you know, get the mind grapes going when we have another petition coming forward that we were talking about and I can't remember what was said. I mean, although we do have the LTC to look at, but, so.
And you have the draft minutes.
Yeah.
You have the draft minutes, so you'll, if you can't remember what you said, you could look at the email.
Yeah, but they get posted one, after they're approved, right? The minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Not the draft, not the draft that is sent to us prior to approval. I mean, once they're approved. I haven't seen...
Okay.
Approved minutes posted up on the website once, after they're approved. I know.
Okay.
A lot of the other boards have them up. I just want to make sure that's, thanks.
With that being said...
Through, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCarthy.
Fran, is there a way we can put an addendum to the zoning board rules and regulations that might address having no more than seven applications come before us? Or is that the way to do it, to do an addendum?
Um, yes. I believe that those rules and regulations, like, you're pretty much self-regulating, so if that's something that the majority of the board would like to do, then it would need to be voted on by the whole board.
And I believe we have to have, like, a document that is presented at the board and then it carries on to a second meeting? I was reading the regulations of how to do an addendum to the regulations, and it seems like there's a document that gets drafted for the change, that gets on public notice, that gets discussed at one meeting.
Okay, we can look into that.
Yeah, there's a procedure that's at least, you know, one or two meetings.
Okay.
And so if you could just help us maybe work that on. I think the board does want to discuss it as far as...
Yes, yes. And, and, Mr. McCarthy, I appreciate you bringing this forward and doing the research on how to appropriately address this for a public record. We've, we've had discussions in the past. I believe, I believe it was six, was, was, was six, and then other business minutes, administrative views and those things. But Mr. McCarthy did his due diligence to figure, to get the, the process going. So I believe a memorandum and then an agenda item and then a vote. And if we could cross-reference that with any other boards in the city who may have done similar agenda allocations, if you will, it would be helpful for all.
Yeah, as I recall, I, looking, watching some of the planning board meetings last year, I recall, I think there were some instances, they said, with, they were trying to continue something, but they said they were already full on a particular date. So I don't know if they, if that's one, one other board to look at that...
Right. They didn't, they didn't modify their rules. It was just the chairman said, this is a rule that I am imposing onto the board because it's my meeting and I would not like any more than, he said three, because theirs are much larger, like, yours are more, well, not always, but some, can be more straightforward.
That why they took the clock out?
Yeah.
Planning board is site plan review, so it's much more complicated projects typically in general. So they set three maximum, but then the chairman can approve of a fourth if the three items are not expected to be too long of hearing. So, which I think would be too, too small for this board, because usually you can go through things a bit faster than that. But I think six or seven makes sense.
Yeah, planning goes a lot more in-depth with a lot of their...
Right.
Their petitions. So it's, we have other petitions, like, you know, signage that, like, the one we had today lasted less than five minutes. So it was like, that was just one, one thing that popped into my head when the chairman mentioned.
Right. I just wanted to note that they don't have an official rule and if you just want to decide as a board what the limit is, then we as staff can just accommodate that no problem, as we do with the planning board.
Yeah.
It's just more straightforward.
Because you'd have to get it up for public notice purposes and make sure...
Right. It's just something that we can do as administrators for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so to Mr. McCarthy's point, it just becomes an agenda item for open discussion under other business, and then we can move forward.
Sure. Yep.
That, that seems, that seems fair. Does anyone agree with that? Those are the awake?
Agreed.
Okay, tremendous. Any other comments or concerns? I'm sure on behalf of the entire Lowell zoning board of appeal, I'd like to, to extend a sincere, happy holidays, safe, safe tidings and happy new year. And I wish everyone have great celebration this year with their family and stay healthy.
Get out.
I'd like to second that sentiment and especially following on the heels of a board of health meeting in this same chamber. We're all worried about the safety of the community. So, safe tidings and, and warm wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? May I have a motion for adjournment?
Through, Mr. Chairman, for the last time in 2021, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by judge. Having a motion for adjournment has been approved by aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Stay safe. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone. See you next year.